Are we higher?
I don't know.
We're good together.
What do you think?
Fine.
About the same height.
But it might be a little stiffer. Let's, let me try it and see.
There's no arms.
No, my arms, I just.
You feel like you're sinking in it?
Thank you.
I feel like my head is on the table, you know, like John the Baptist or something. It's just too low for me. Or this table's maybe a little high.
Oh, yes.
So where's your T-shirt from?
We're clear to-
A guy at work even.
Oh, okay.
Didn't actually go there.
Oh, bummer. There you go.
All right, we're clear to go if you want to start.
Okay. Welcome to our meeting. I declare a call and present and call the meeting to order.
Six thirty-five.
I must announce that the planning board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. We now have name tags, but I'm Alice Livedall, chair. Next to me is Fran Swa, Steiger, Bill Holman, and John D'Amelia, Martin Lewis member. We, we have a policy here that we open meetings with public hearings. And have people sign in and indicate whether they want to speak, and they can speak. Public comment session, and if they run long, we, we cut it off and continue at the end of the meeting. But I believe everybody here is related to, except for Todd Miller, who's our guest speaker. You guys are all related to the hearing we're opening up right away. So why don't we, and if your comments are going to relate to that, then why don't we have the presentation go first and it can follow in sequence?
Sounds good.
Sound good to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so, the first item in our agenda. Is a public hearing on a scenic road application by Gerald and Deborah Campbell, who are here. For a driveway opening, basically, at twenty-one Hale Road. This was pub- published notice of it pursuant to our bylaw. I don't know, do we need to read this, what was published?
No, no, as long as a summation is given.
Okay, so, what they want to do is on, for the property at twenty-one Hale Road, is to remove one tree, a six-inch white ash, and a section of stone wall for the installation of a driveway. And they have plans and they have their expert here. Like, I don't, you'll have to introduce yourself.
I'm not, I'm Jerry.
You're Jerry. Oh, just the two of you guys. Okay, so you're here with the plan. Okay.
He's a Campbell expert.
Okay, no, that's fine. I thought maybe you were preparing a plan and I always give the, the person an option. Do you want to come up and address us with your opinion?
We have to go first into a public, uh-
We have to vote to go into a public hearing.
I make a motion that we go into a public hearing regarding the scenic road application for twenty-one Hale Road, the Campbells request to apply for the-
Okay.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. The petitioners, you want to tell us what you're going to do and-
Yes, thank you for hearing us. So this is a plan of the property that an engineer drafted. They indicate the driveway to be on the, let me get my bearings here, northeast of the property. I believe, or southeast of the property. It's about a twelve-inch opening in a rock wall. The wall itself in that area has, is falling down. And so we're proposing to remove that section for the driveway. There's some additional volun- we temporarily will remove some on either side and put it back after the construction, the project is done for access by trucks. So that's what we're looking to do with the wall. And in this vicinity here is a six-inch ash tree that is in the line of sight from the driveway scene down the road. So it's impacting visibility and safety from egress of that driveway location.
Just for clarity purposes, you said twelve inches?
Tw- sorry, twelve feet.
Twelve feet, okay, that's what I thought.
I apologize. Thank you.
Is the tree shown on this map?
It's not. We did show it on the submission.
Okay, we need to-
So, um, and this is, um-
This is what was submitted to the tree inspector. Yeah, it's in our paper, but it's color here if you-
Yeah.
Yes, not only that, they provided color photos that I didn't have in this packets of where the wall is coming down. You can pass those down.
So in the case of the, the pictures, the red, the red tape indicates the-
They're all the same, I think.
The permanent removal. And the yellow tape indicates a temporary removal of the rock wall that we'll put back.
Now, we, are you in a butter?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you want, you want to come up to the table too and look at the plans?
Yep.
And the pictures? And then we'll hear what you have to say too. So you could turn it around and show her.
Okay.
So there's an existing area that's already open, which is about six feet wide, maybe eight feet wide.
Correct.
Is that the other end?
Yes, this would be, so this is the end that's currently open. And this is the end that we're proposing to put the driveway in. In this area, the rock wall has already fallen apart. But, yes.
Do you want to give your name to, to us again?
I'm Lois Tyler. I live at nineteen Hale Road.
Okay, just so the tape can pick it up.
Nice to meet you, Lois.
Hi.
So you nineteen, and this is twenty-one.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm right here.
So you're here. Okay, so the driveway would be on the opposite side of the property from you. Is there, what do you plan to do with the stones that are removed, that you're permanently removing?
Well, we're, our hope is to use them to enhance the existing wall and other walls on the property.
We, we'd like you to keep them in the front wall, if you can.
Mm-hmm.
I think, maybe I shouldn't speak for the board, as opposed to locate them elsewhere on the property.
Okay.
So the whole, this is a pretty good representation of the shape of the wall?
Correct.
Are there rough field stones?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't know if you can see that. I'll show you pictures. I know that, I know, I've been here thirty years.
These are the considerations that are required for-
Thank you, I'll just have to check that out in a second.
I'm trying to figure out where it is on my Jeep, but it won't, it's not working right.
These are the considerations for scenic road, forty-four by law.
Yes. It's before Curtis Farm. It's that, Wade used to own that piece of property.
Okay.
He used it for cows and whatnot. And that stone wall, it's only, it's seven tenths of an acre. No, there's no barn there. Seven tenths of an acre. And that's specifically what she's talking about, but they own more of, of the property.
Oh, okay.
This is the tree in question?
No, um, there's another photo that shows the tree.
So putting these two together here, this is this pose. Am I right? This, this is-
It would be somewheres on there, they're, they're sized differently, but it would be somewheres on this order and the tree.
So it's just a very corner of your lot?
It's, it's over, yes, it's very close to the pin over here.
How the property actually goes is, there's a pin here, but in order to get the frontage when they sold the lot, so the lot basically goes here and then goes straight in on a little triangle.
I was gonna say-
And then this wall separates the next field, but in order to get, to sell the frontage, they had to, there's another, there's a pin there, and then there's another pin where the property line is, and then that goes in like that.
Okay, I was making sure you're not removing a tree on somebody else's lot.
No.
Okay, alright.
Yes, it's, it's marked inside the property.
Can I ask how many acres you actually have?
The total acreage is three point six, I believe.
It says here, three point five eight.
Okay, there it is, yeah.
So that's close. And can you talk about, these are gradient lines?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So there's a steep slope from the street up to the house?
Yes, from the place where it's open, there's a steep slope down, which is why the engineer chose this location for the driveway as opposed to coming in this way.
Okay. Alright, and the, our tree inspector, tree warden, has looked at this and signed off. The package is in our notes. Everybody see that?
Mr. Borrisson, I have no objection to the removal of this tree.
Right.
So it's, okay.
I'm set with this?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, so we have a number of things that we have to go over to make sure that this, um, just let us read for a second the considerations and see if there's anything else we need to ask you. Anttribution of trees and stone walls. So this is essentially a safety concern, not so much, well, public too, if you're pulling out from a blind spot, I suppose.
There's both, yes.
Also, I've been in touch with the DPW with regards to the temporary removal. They're responsible for the oversight of that, once the driveway goes underway. They have the before pictures so that the stone wall can be replaced, because that's who's responsible for replacing temporary stone wall removal.
Okay, so, when you're done, you're going to contact them and that's part of your obligation.
Right, because we have to, then, after we get, we have to go to Travis and actually get the permit and he'll mark out.
For the driveway permit.
Yes, okay.
So just for my clarification, this is a lot you, is it recently purchased by you?
Yes.
Okay, and so you're, you're going to be building on this lot a, a house for your residence?
Next spring, we're going to be building a, downsizing to a single level.
I understand that, okay.
It's on the left-hand side after you pull in and go by the old wall, we find, right?
This for all the lists that the plan has to contain.
It's right next to-
Off of Williams Road, if you take a left, yeah.
Yeah, there is no list.
It's down the left-hand side, it will be, well, the second house down on the left half, if you build it.
Yeah.
I did the perk test for that, I know right where it is.
Okay.
So.
Okay, well. I'm sorry, have you, Lois, Lois, you have further questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I actually do. I'm not sure why the stone removal, now that I know where it is, is an issue, because this was already busted down by the prior owners. So, I'm not sure why it's an issue. And if that's the case, why can't they move the stones to the other side and rebuild the stone wall on that side? Where the original opening's been, because trucks used to go in through there. The other thing is, um, so I, I've been away on vacation, so I really didn't have time to do a lot of homework. We just got in late last night, so, is this in the purchase and sales agreement? Because you already own the property?
We already own the property.
Because it's not registered in the deeds.
Well, we just-
The deeds have been registered, but it hasn't come over to the town yet.
Okay, because the other, my understanding is, in order for, and correct me if I'm wrong, in order for them to build, for him, them to have two, two hundred feet of frontage on three acres, my understanding, the only way that they allow, you allow a hundred feet of acres, um, frontage is if you have ten acres. Am I wrong on that?
We have one.
We do have two hundred feet of frontage.
You have to have two hundred feet of frontage on the town.
Alright.
My understanding is someone looked into buying this years ago, and, um, when Ted Curtis owned it, and he was going to purchase that property and go towards the farm, but he was unable to give him, if he did do that, it would only give a hundred, minus seven feet of frontage, because that's seven tenths of an acre. Is not the two hundred feet. And in order for him to do that, to the buyer, he would have to, um, because that whole area's on a sixty-one A. And they're, it's fine, and there was a DAC tax, so Ted was not willing to do that, he'd have to pay back taxes on the whole thing. So it's, my assumption is those old, old DAC taxes haven't paid on that property?
The bottom line is, ma'am, no building permit will be issued for this if there's no legal two hundred feet of frontage on the town here, uh, through the building inspector's office. We can approve a, um, driveway permit, but, or, not permit, a scenic road application, but, so I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but, I, we're not the ones that actually deem whether they have legal two hundred feet of frontage on the, on the road or not. I don't believe we can do that.
And that's the building department.
Yeah, that's a film.
And it's already been established.
Correct.
If it's stated on the plan here by an engineer, it would show that.
So the town, the town of Haversen, the plant, as, as indicated here on the five-two, I guess it's two thousand fifteen. The current existing frontage has probably stated at one point in time was a hundred and sixty-seven point one-one feet. But, to your point, there's a triangle that you also own, which brings an additional thirty-three point five-one feet. Giving you a total of just over two hundred feet of frontage.
Correct.
So it's not a hundred foot, you have actually two hundred feet of frontage at this point in time.
We verify that before we purchase it.
I, I would hope you did. I have a similar situation with my house in, where I live in, in Haversen, where we have a sliver of land in front of somebody else's property, which is only maybe two feet wide. And it's just to make sure that we have the two hundred feet of frontage. So I, I'm, I'm very familiar with, with situations like that. So I think, just to answer your question, ma'am, uh, I do believe that the two hundred feet of frontage is, is, is something that they have, just based on what I am seeing here on this, on this, on this, uh, on this document.
I do know, I don't read plans very well, but when they did do the, um, the drainage on the road years, a few years ago, with the engineer that designed it, had our property two feet further south. And when I showed him my plans, he realized my plans were his engineers. So I'm, I'm not sure what plans they have, but, or what the engineer that designed that, but when I pulled out my plans, which I know where they are now, I, he definitely, he took a look at it, and, because they wanted to put a drainage back into the rental pool out back.
Mm-hmm.
And they realized they had to redesign the plans.
I understand.
And I, it's about two, maybe three feet. It wasn't a lot.
Sure.
And I'm not sure-
But if it was corrected when they laid this out, that correction should have been picked up.
You mean the, the engineer that didn't do it correct the first time, they would have fixed that?
Who did this here? Yes.
All of them, just plain done, folks?
This plan, this plan was done this summer.
And it was done by a licensed engineer?
It was done by a licensed engineering company.
But this plan is, is a little bit different, so-
Yeah, this is the, um, the, the original plot plan that was published, and this was done in twenty fifteen.
Correct, that's what it looks like. And that, but that plan does clearly indicate that the original lot was a hundred and sixty-seven point one-one feet.
Correct.
And to which I'm assuming, because we're not here to-
Determine that.
To determine that, we're really looking at it more from the perspective of the spe- the special permit. That is required here for the, um, I'm sorry, for, yeah, the, the, not the special permit, the, the public hearing is purely here for the scenic road application. And since it was brought up, I'm just looking at the plan itself, I mean, and based on the plan that I'm seeing, that is from the Town of Haversen Planning Board, that was approved for subdivision. It does indicate that there's a thirty-three point five-one feet additional that comes into play here, which brings it to a total of, if my math is correct, it brings it right under the, right, just a tad over the two hundred feet, uh, from that perspective. So, but the, 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 the important point to note here is, is that the tree in question is not on the hundred and sixty-seven feet, but it's actually on that extra thirty-three feet. And so by virtue of the fact that you're testing that, that piece of, uh, property belongs to you on which that ash tree is in, on, and on which you're basically asking for a, uh, an application to remove that tree, we do believe, or I would say, I, I do believe that you have brought a plan, you've indicated that this tree, it belongs to you, because it's on, on your property, and that's what you're requesting to, 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 to remove.
Correct.
Okay, very good.
And what's left of that wall, so we can put in it, right?
Sure, no, I, I, that, that, that is clear, but I'm assuming here that the two hundred feet that you're taking, I'm sorry, that, that the wall is within the hundred and sixty-seven feet. You're not taking it out of that-
Correct.
-sliver of land, you're just simply taking that tree off-
Correct.
-that, that additional piece of property, okay. That wall as indicated, and I think, uh, um, Lois, you, Ms. Tyler, Mrs. Tyler, I, I'm assuming that, that wall as, as depicted on the picture here has been in this condition for some time. But that, this is, this is-
Since we looked at the property.
This is the present condition?
Right.
This is the present condition, okay.
I don't know when it's happened, but-
We pretty much cut all the brush off and all that stuff.
Sure.
No stones.
But when you purchased this, those stones were already missing and they were not there, okay.
They were like-
And that's where you're asking for the, that's where you're asking, uh, the board for us to come in and look at it and determine if it's okay for us to remove that so that you can build an entry, so that you can build your house behind that and create a driveway there.
Correct.
Excellent, okay. I think, at least I understand the situation.
Has this plan been superseded with a plan that does show the triangle?
Um, it shows it on there, it's just you can't, it's very small, but it's at the bottom.
That's thirty-three, which is thirty-three point five-one.
Yes.
Yeah, but where is the line that backs up from it?
There's no line there.
Yeah, they don't, yeah.
That line is not, usually because it's so, it's so, it's so small that usually it's only two feet.
Okay, is that the case? It's only a two feet?
It's very narrow.
Yeah, it's a very small, it's just technically, it's your frontage.
Yeah, it basically goes almost directly back to the wall.
Yeah.
And this was conveyed to you by that abutter on that side, or?
I beg your pardon?
That, this, this sliver to create this lot, was it conveyed?
Well, the Greens are the per, people who sold us the property.
Okay, and they're the abutter?
And they're the abutter on that.
Correct. They're the ones that had the subdivision.
Alright, and they have three hundred and sixty-two feet of frontage left.
They have the farm on the other side.
Three hundred and sixty-two, so there's plenty, you know, they couldn't give you theirs if it created a shortage of frontage on their lot.
I see what you're saying, correct.
But that's, so, see, this is what they have. They have three hundred and sixty. Am I reading that right? Three hundred and sixty-two eighty-seven feet left for the frontage of the farm that's left. So, alright, well, um, I don't think we have authority to say you must put those rocks at the other end where there's a gap. I think it's a reasonable consideration.
I, I have no problem building a rock wall up there.
On the other end where it's been taken apart, well, we're-
If that's, I mean-
As long as the rocks, your, your, your direction to us was that the rocks should remain as part of that front wall.
Yes, yes.
Our, our-
You could put them anywhere, but don't put them elsewhere on your property. We're trying to-
Try to keep them in the-
Keep people from removing stones.
We have, we have had recently situations as the planning board where stone walls have been scenic, have been, have been removed, especially from scenic roads. And we've made a, a very clear statement as a planning board that something that should not be happening unless, obviously, there's reasons for doing it, like what you're, uh, explaining. And, and, and we're asking that the preservation of these stone walls, because we are a rural community, we're a community that has scenic roads, that, uh, if there is a restoration potential, that we reutilize those stones in a manner that preserves as much as possible those stone walls that we have. And in your particular case, we're not telling you what to do, but we're asking you that any stone walls that you have, uh, material, that you're taking out of that area where you're building the driveway, that it be utilized in such a manner that it would be still part of the, uh, stone wall right at the frontage, right at the front. Again, it helps you, it helps the community, it helps us to view this here as a preservation project. Again, we cannot tell you to do this here, but it would be good if you could do this here.
We have all intentions of doing what the town wants. Our whole goal was, the only reason why we asked for that additional, initial, um, removal of the wall was, because the road is, you know, to get the trucks in, to deliver the lumber, we wanted a swing radius, and then we planned to just have enough, rebuild them on both sides.
Yep.
Yeah, we want to take a little extra down during construction, but put it all back.
Okay.
Excellent, alright.
Travis will be aware of that.
Very good.
Are we ready to close the discussion?
Should I make a motion that we close the session and?
You want to make the motion to?
My only question is, um, as far as septic, does that, does that go on to the conserve, conservation committee?
We have no.
We have no clue.
We already, we already have an approved septic system. We already have a, a site plan that's been approved by, it's already been passed by the conservation, the Board of Health.
Okay.
We just have jurisdiction over the scenic road, if the lot's been approved and, um, alright.
I make a motion, we approve the application for this scenic road application.
The twenty-one Hale Road.
Twenty-one Hale Road.
As presented this evening. I would second this motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Cheryl and Deborah, good luck. Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we don't seem to have Mr. Talby here.
Do you want to go back to public comments?
Point of order, um, minutes approval, we had to, um, due to recording error, the minutes will not be approved tonight, even though it was on the agenda for this evening. I want to make sure that was stated for the record.
Good night. So that's why, we need to get out of a-
Yes, we do need to vote to exit public hearing.
Okay.
So.
I make a motion, we enter the public hearing.
I would like to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the points of order, thank you, Christina, for helping me out.
And there's nobody here for public comment, correct?
No. And Mr. Talby isn't here, from Casella. So, we can move along to our sign by law. Todd Miller, see on the agenda.
Hi, how's it going?
Yeah, come and join us.
How are you? Not too bad. Uh, you'll see, uh, behind the packet that you have, I believe I disseminated, uh, just a quick outline of the sign by law, the reorganized sign by law.
It's at the very back of your packet, he gave you an outline, he said a one-page outline.
Yes, super, super quick. Um, I just wanted to kind of keep you guys up to date with some of the modifications I've made to the sign by law draft that you guys already have. You guys, all of you do have PDS of that prospective sign by law? Excellent. Um, if you haven't, let me look back down. You guys need to work with me and talk about, um, the way that you envision the iterations of signs in town to take place. There's a lot of flexibility, um, but there are some guidelines and some guardrails to that flexibility, things that kind of overstep what a sign by law can and can't do. Um, I'll be there to help guide you through that process, but this really here is, um, for you guys as a board, to have some open and frank discussions about how you envision signs and signage in, in general to be shaped throughout Haversen, um, by zone. Uh, what I did do is I did break down, um, some areas that are, I'm going to start with the most restrictive, which are currently our AR, our agricultural residential zones. They have the most restrictive sign by laws, things that are not permissible, or the sizes are smaller for each individual sign. And then as it goes down, it opens up, like town center zone, it's more of a hybridized style of zoning, where it's a little bit less restrictive than, than agricultural, but certainly more restrictive than commercial zones. Just to kind of, kind of, uh, reveal the facet that town center will have some signs, but the iteration of them is going to be more subdued than if we're in a commercial or industrial zone. Additionally, I'm going to have some, um, some supplemental tables that'll kind of put it in really quick referenceable terms, that you'll be able to compare one to the other. You'll be able to compare commercial to residential, what's allowed, what's not allowed. Some of those allowances are up to you in terms of scope and in terms of frequency. I mean, how many signs is, uh, for example, a pizza place allowed to have? Allow, are they allowed to have one? Is it only facing one direction, or is it double-sided, things like that? Would it be allowed to be illuminated, like have a, a light cast on it at night? Or is it permissible for it to have an internal illumination, like an LED system? Something like that is, um, largely up to your discretion, but I'll be able to provide advice on best planning practice. But the current sign by law that we have in town is a patchwork of different fixes, and it's, it's frankly, it's a jumbled mess. Um, and it need, and it warrants a full replacement. Usually these sign by laws are reviewed and re-reviewed every five to seven years. We're going on over forty. That's something that's kind of glaring to me as a town planner, that in order to really keep the, the, the rural aesthetic that Haversen enjoys, we need to keep a close eye on what we permit and what we don't. Additionally, I would like to have a, a joint met session, if possible, with the building commissioner, who's our, our sign, uh, he's our, our enforcement officer. We would need to have him here too, to come up with a schedule if we decide to go and have permit fees and things like that. Who would be enforcing it would be the zoning enforcement officer. That's up to your discretion, that schedule of fees, I would like to really hash out with both you and the zoning enforcement officer, because that's really his domain.
Actually, I don't think he has any say in it. I think we set that and he just enforces that, the building inspector.
Oh, fantastic.
I don't think they set their own fees.
Well, I had some, um, you remember when we were redoing fees?
Mm-hmm.
We, if you, if you put it in the by law, the fee schedule, then you have to go to town meeting every time you want to change it, which is why it hadn't been changed for twenty years.
Right, right.
So I was supposed to send Todd, and I didn't. But there is a clause we had, as fees may be set from time to time by the planning board. So I do think he should be consulted. Ideally, you collect these fees to, uh, not to make money for the town, but to cover the cost of sending an inspector out there and-
Right.
It's just though you're not incurring anything additional. You're not, it's not a revenue source, but it's there just to keep everything going.
So I, I apologize for not getting that provision. I was going to look back and look at, you know, but that would be the way to set the fees.
Okay.
But we do need enforcement provisions.
Right.
But I think what we really need now is what people really think about, okay, let's start with resident, residential zones. At the moment, the limit is one square foot for a permanent sign, not illuminated.
Which is really small.
Which is really small, right. And, uh, and then we have temporary signs, which have to be put in and taken out unless the business is open.
Right.
And, so anyway, I, I think we ought to go zone by zone and think about why we have this, get some thought, so he knows what, what we want. That's a big problem.
Is it more prudent to have a public hearing and get more thoughts of people what they think?
Any, any source of data collection that we can have, I would definitely advocate for.
I think to go to a public hearing, you actually have something on paper to show people.
Exactly, we would need to have something more to have, to get their thoughts on.
Well, I think we could tweak this a little bit, but, uh, I'd like to get people's opinion unless we put it on a survey, but that, you know, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's time-intensive, and it's also, it's in, it's not ineffective, but it's less effective than other means of gathering information.
Really, okay.
Because it, it's not, uh, the kind of folks that would actually fill out a survey, whether it's online or on paper, you get different demographics.
Different sorts of folks will apply to one or to the other.
Uh, so you need to have a comprehensive kind of all-hands-on-deck approach to gather all the necessary data, and then to form kind of a- and then to form kind of a, a coherent conclusion, something that makes sense and sound. Um, so that's more difficult to do. We could, for example, contact CMRPC or for here would be MRPC to do some data collecting, data collection, but that would, it would have some significant expense and it would be relatively slow going. So there are options, but.
We also have, we cannot, since it's a bylaw, we're proposing. We have to have a public hearing when we unroll it, but.
Right. Right.
Oh, yeah. And expect amendments while it's on the floor, as likely.
Right, right. So anything we create is a draft.
Right.
Uh, but I think you have to, I think it would be okay to, to create a document and let people respond to it and think about it.
Right.
Uh, because you, there are certain confines you're gonna have to work with, which is the type of signs in the zoning districts, right? So, and also we're on a fairly aggressive timeline because.
We are, yeah, there's, we don't have all that much time to spare at all.
Right, right.
The, the feeling by, with Ryan is that he'd like to have it on the spring, for the spring meeting, which means it's gotta go through us, it's gotta be a document, it's gotta go to select board, it's gotta come back to us, we gotta have a hearing and then a vote. And it's, these things are not easy to draft.
No.
So I think.
I'm here to do that.
Um.
I actually looked at it, I, I had some questions, but I thought it was pretty good.
Uh, this is very similar to a document I crafted for the town of Franklin, the city of Franklin. I crafted their housing production plans, a very similar framework. Planning doc, documents are different than, uh, traditional legal documents, as you know. Um, and there's also that, uh, a, a planning document should reflect the vision and the spirit of which it was crafted. It doesn't need to be there to come up with every single what-if scenario. We have a zoning board of appeals to advocate that. Um, that's why there's a, I made sure to input at the bottom here, for any conflict or interpretative, interpretive difference, it's there to go right to the ZVA.
Right, it's in the, it's in the bylaw.
Yeah, exactly. I, I did, I just kind of switched the order around so it flew, it flew a bit better.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I definitely like this new format better. Um, so I'll, once we get kind of the, the go-to and the stamp of approval on this format, then I'll go ahead and I'll reconfigure the document.
Right.
So that way it'll be more in line with what, uh, with what currently exists under chapter seventeen.
Do you want to, to walk us through, um, some of the signs we, what you would consider would be permissible in residential zones based on your experience?
Sure. Um, it's, it's still currently in there.
And go through these?
But under best planning practice, the signs that are of commercial nature, not wayfinding signs or informative, like, uh, like no caution, my address, you know, would be less than one square feet sort of thing. The Millers, you know, X, you know, Bean Street, whatever it is, that's would be, still be under one square feet. That's a simple informative sign. It's not a wayfinding sign. Those would be something that's more like a next left you'll find X or Y. It's a little just there to help you find your bearings. But all of the definitions are contained in that document and as you look at the chart, you'll be able to see which would be permissible and at what size. The ones that are really of a, of a special concern are the home-based occupations.
That's it.
Those, the, those are the key ones that would be the main users and interfusers with these signs. And those I tried to, um, I followed best planning practices disseminated by UMass Amherst. And they've done exceptionally good job. They're the best in the country. We're very fortunate to have them around. They're, they beat Harvard, they beat MIT, they beat Caltech.
Oh, wow.
Lowly UMass Amherst is the best in the country and we have them in our backyard. So I worked with them and I interfaced with them and we, we put quite a bit of work into the, the dimensions found there.
Oh, wow.
And we're very fortunate to have them as a free resource. That said, the signs there, as terms of size, it's very flexible, especially since home-based occup, occupations are as of yet rather uncommon. They're not, they're going to be increasing in the future, but as of now, the state is which where they're not all that prevalent on a town by town. There's just not that many compared to what there will be. So we need to think about what we think is permissible. Um, I think one square foot is fine. It's not, it's not going to detract from the neighborhood aesthetic. It's not going to be, um, an eyesore to the neighbors. It's not going to provide glare from anyone coming by and coming out. It's not gonna be distracting or in any way detract from the neighborhood aesthetic. So I think that one square foot is fair and reasonable and it's in, it's in consonance with everything else that's best planning practice. There is some wiggle room there, but I wouldn't go any further than three square feet.
With, with your, with your one square foot, which I think is way too small in sixty-eight, which is where most of our industries are. That's my personal opinion and I don't know whether there's.
Yep.
That's iron, iron sized.
It's tiny, but however, for sixty-eight in particular, there's another project that's lined up that I spoke to you about for, the chapter forty R overlay,
Yes, they don't.
which, uh, which is, uh, let's just get an addendum. Uh, overlay districts, I don't know how familiar you are with them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they're essentially zoning on top of the existing zone. You know, it would allow by special permit, uh, for example, a residential structure to be classified and used as if it were a commercial or industrial or some other special designation. So for sixty-eight in particular, um, that's another project that I'm going to be working on with you hopefully later on this year, is having sixty-eight, uh, part of it, of commercial overlay, like an economic development overlay district, which will allow people and parcels going along sixty-eight to come before you for a special permit and kind of plead their case why they would like to use more than thirty percent of their square footage to use it for whatever business occupation they'd like to do. It would prevent the entire town from having to re, hard rezone certain properties and it kind of reduces their flexibility. It also provides sixty-eight to be more adaptable. It allows us the town to, and the people of the town to use sixty-eight to their advantage. They would just have to go before you for that special permit as, as situations and com, as, as things come to go. Um, it, as a situation prevents itself, it gives you more adaptability and more flexibility, rather than being just forced into a simple box. If we were to just turn everything along sixty-eight to commercial, that really wouldn't help us because people live along sixty-eight and they deserve to live there too. This gives us some more versatility to our zoning practice and it's something that as time goes on, hard rigid zoning is gonna be going more and more the way of the, way of the dodo. It's not gonna be going that way.
So in, in your section that allows exemptions through special permits?
Uh, it's, it's not in here. That would be under the forty R overlay. Um, but this here, you can go and get a variance for specific cases if you can prove by the three, just, three conditions below
Mm-hmm.
that it's an undue burden, or if it was an issue that wasn't foreseen or thought of during the crafting of this particular bylaw. That's something that is the ZVA's, uh, dominion and that's something they have the sole discretion over. Um, but it's there for those situations that you just could not foresee, or something that is a special case for one reason or another.
But do you want to create, uh, like a subsection that says for forty R, forty R overlays when and if enacted or something, because you're gonna have, otherwise to come right back and amend this again?
That would be. That, that would. Oh, yeah. Well, that, that's the, the good, I was gonna go at it the other way.
Okay, explain.
In the crafting of the forty R overlay?
Yep.
We could say upon granting of the special permit by the special permit granting authority, which is this body. Parcels that have been, uh, approved for that secondary use would be classified as they were, you know, purely zoned, commercial or industrial, whichever use that it's, it's been approved for. So we can either go A to B or from B to A. It's really different ways to the same place.
Okay.
So the overlay would then say that the residential property is now commercial, which means the sign for commercials would apply to that residential property.
Exactly. By, in that permit is only for this particular use. Exactly. It's, it's pretty much, you, it's not transferable. So for this particular use, Mr. Smith wanted to use his house as a dentist or whichever it is, any, any particular thing.
Okay.
He would go before you saying, I would like to use a hundred percent of this structure for my dental practice. You, he would kind of plead his case with you. You guys would, would decide over that, grant him the special permit and then that particular parcel would be, you know, treated as if it were commercial or medical, whatever. Whatever would cover the dentist's office, whatever the use would be. Um, so you could do A to B or B to A. It's really different ways to the same place. So we could put in that provision if a forty R overlay is enacted, you know, we could, we could complete that.
Okay.
Or we could go at it later on this year when we try to get that forty R overlay district for sixty-eight done. It's really different ways to the same place.
Right. I think it makes more sense in the forty R because then you can decide what the residential property gets classified as, so you're, you're not just saying this whole strip now gets to do whatever.
Right.
You're saying this house gets to do commercial, but the next one isn't commercial, it's industrial, so they get to do X.
You got more control.
Exactly. Exactly. And really the maintain, the maintenance of that community fabric, uh, for granting those special permits is, is really up to your board. It's more of a prescriptive practice, which is something that isn't, as of now, typically the, the planning board's role is to be prescriptive, but that's the way that best planning practice is kind of permuting your role. The ZVA will be there to decide for things that are contentious, but for things like special permits, in order to maintain neighborhood character and neighborhood aesthetic, planning boards are stepping into that role at increased rate. So that's something that's likely to continue.
I know this is a, a carp for the horse. What I'm, what I'm saying is, um, um, that I think that there ought to be something in our, since this is the bylaw that's gonna pass first.
Yep.
That lets people know that if you go another route and apply for the special permit, you get an exemption from this because that governs. So you can figure out how to put that in. But I think it should be there because otherwise, the first time we're gonna approve something, you're gonna have a room full of the butters that say they're not allowed to do that under the sign by law, if it includes a sign, right?
Right, right.
So if you can make a note of that, that would be good.
I can put, you know, in case of overlay districts, X, I can, I can easily put that in there.
Yeah, yeah. Prevent, yeah, some kind of a.
That makes sense.
Yeah. I, I, I think if we lay the groundwork for that now, it would make the next project that much more simple.
Right.
I just want, it was a balancing act between, uh, preserving time, because we're on a bit of a time crunch to get it in before the spring meeting, versus being thorough and just trying to make sure that we tried to do all the things at once. I would rather take a small bite, chew it and swallow it, than bite off more than we can chew.
I had a couple of little questions when I went through it. Is it okay to present that now or do you want us to wait?
Yeah, no, I think we ought to all, all go through and we've got a time tonight and.
Yep.
Um.
So we'll start with Bill and then we'll go to John and then Francois and then I'll.
I had a couple before that, that during the discussion you kind of answered them for me. Um, under page seven of eighteen, it says restrictions applicable to signs on public property, no signs shall exceed forty-two inches in height. It's just, I think that's small.
The three and a half feet is there to not be, it's not to obstruct oncoming traffic. It's there not to be a, a visibility barrier.
Right. Okay.
Uh, that's from the National Highway and Safety Board. Uh, it's, and from also the Department of Transportation.
Okay.
That's their rule and that has been kind of, kind of threaded through all the similar bylaws that are out there. And it made sense to me to include.
Okay. Okay.
What, what provision is that for, again?
A sign on public property.
On public property, okay.
Yeah. This is on page nine. It would be.
Like two or three paragraphs in?
Under, it says, "Community event signs are intended to be used for events sponsored by the town or nonprofit organizations. All signs may be placed no more than ten days prior to the event." Is that enough time?
These are the kind of discussions that I would really like you guys to have at length, because these are things that are going to be impacting not just this year, but every subsequent year that this bylaw is enacted.
Well, I think get our, get our input. Do you think, I mean, that's a fair question.
Mines club has got, has their sign up usually two or three weeks before their event.
I would say thirty days before.
I was thinking, uh, with that.
I think that sounds more reasonable.
Maybe thirty days before and then removed within ten days after would be fair.
Well, it says seven days, so I.
Yeah, I think seven days after. Once it's done, it should be pretty quick after.
Does that make sense? I mean, feel free to take one of these copies and mark it up so that way I can take that back with me and enact those changes.
I'm gonna take some notes too, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Go ahead.
On the same page, bottom of the page, section E, E, under prohibited signs, signs on wheels or upon unregistered motor vehicles are prohibited. Does that include the town's digital sign for traffic safety?
No, 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 that is there under traffic signs. That would be a movable sign. That one is allowed. However, would, that, that portion of the bylaw is designed to prevent people, for example, spray painting dead cars, advertising for things, things like that.
Oh, okay.
But, 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 I, I'm, I'm a bit concerned about that because, I mean, uh, as long as it's movable, what happens when somebody puts a sign on their car advertising their business? How does that come into play?
Well, then it would be a registered vehicle.
That's allowed. If it's a registered vehicle, right.
This says, uh, no for unregistered.
It's there to prevent dead cars from being used to, to buy.
No, no, that, that I, okay, that I understand, so, uh.
So if you have a van and you have a carpet cleaning business.
And you put your sign on, that's, that's okay.
Sign on your van, that's okay, that's not regulated.
But if it's a junk car, that's just, you know, something slapped on as a way to kind of circumvent this bylaw, it's there to get a, it's, it, you put it, you put effort in to prevent some of the easily foreseen
Right.
or means around it.
So may, may, maybe I have the wrong, maybe I have the wrong version here, but I, I thought that in section seventeen point four, three, four, which is movable, portable and mobile signs, right? This is.
Is that the old one?
That one could be original by law.
Um, that's not the one that came to the, the one that came to the last meeting. I didn't actually print that one out again for this meeting because I didn't know it could be bringing a third one.
That is the original, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Not.
No, no, I'm sorry. I.
That, that's fine, okay. Apologize.
I just made sure to grab the, uh, the outlines. I apologize.
I took, I took the one from the handout.
Yeah, last, last time.
Oh, no, it was the one I, no, I had this at home from last time.
Yes.
Yes, from last time.
I read through that.
Gotcha, okay. Cause I did have, okay, then I was, I was looking at the wrong, no, 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 it's not, not your fault. If anything, it's my fault that I took the wrong one.
Yeah, I apologize, that's.
There's been a couple of iterations that I had to email.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's all right, thanks.
On page eleven, it says, "Only one signed permit, permit license section, uh, letter C, only one signed permit for a sandwich board sign is allowed for business involved." And it goes on to talk, it says, "Evidence of insurance in an amount established by the zoning enforcement officer and approved by the town administrator shall be provided annually with a permit application."
I mean, that's all subjective. It's all up to the zo, the ZE, the zoning enforcement officer. I didn't want to get into the weeds of trying to tell the enforcement, the enforcement officer how to do their job.
Well, I personally don't think the building inspector should be setting all those fees. I, I think they're there to enforce whatever we label it as. That's, that's my, my opinion.
Yep. There should be fees as established by the planning board.
Yeah, and, and fee schedules established at an administrative level are much more flexible and more responsive, as opposed to them codified into a bylaw.
Right, so I've gotta send you that provision, but.
So as soon as we get that, we can easily implement that on the administrative end.
But there's another question there, Bill, from what you read. Doesn't it say also insurance? Is that where, is that where that?
Evidence of insurance in an amount established by the zoning enforcement officer and approved by the town administrator shall be provided insurance for.
Just any sort of liability. It's really just there in case something happens. In case that sign blows away and hits someone in the head or something.
On the sign?
A temporary sign. Crashes through a windshield or whatever. So usually what they.
Is that?
Yeah.
I, I know what it's for. I just wanted to bring it up as a.
Well, then, it should be probably set in our fee schedule too. I would say it should be, most business policies have, you know, million dollar liability limits. And that's what they're looking at.
Yeah. Some sort of liability, yeah.
Right, so we should state in here that there should be a liability insurance policy on the business to cover any unforeseen.
What level of insurance?
Something like that.
With limits of, acceptable limits. I don't know, you could.
But I don't think the. I don't think the building inspector and the town, town manager should be setting those fees or.
The limits on the insurance, well, all right, we, I, we can, we can put that in.
Yeah. But no, doesn't, but, but that's accessible more than once a month. And that's the real trick is to find someone who could be a point of contact that's reliably accessible.
Right, right.
It should be, what they do is they would submit a certificate of insurance along with their application to maintain a sign.
It goes, we should say, it should be a part of the application process and one of the things on the, the application should be, shows.
Liability coverage.
Liability insurance and kind of leave it at that.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're gonna require insurance, it should be part of the business certificate rather than a sign permit, to be honest.
Yeah, but they could put their business certificate, a co, they're gonna apply for a sign, so they attach to it a certificate of insurance. All they have to do is go down and get it from their insurance company.
Just like getting a proof of insurance for your car.
It doesn't cost you more, it just says this is unless.
It alleviates a lot of that section. We don't really need that, I don't think.
You could take it out and we could put it, well, I think there's a, there is.
I'm just saying, I'm not sure that why we have, why we should be telling them they need insurance. You know, if, if their sign hurts somebody, they're responsible whether they have insurance or not.
I, I think it's one of those things they would be recommend, I would advise they have insurance, but if they don't, that's a risk that they're gonna absorb.
Right, that's, that's all I'm saying. I don't think we should be requiring them to have insurance to get a sign permit. Doesn't seem like those two things go together. If we want every business to have insurance, it should be part of the business certificate rather than a sign permit, but that's my thought process.
Yeah, I didn't want to get too much into the weeds of all the administrative, uh, levels of thing. I really wanted to talk a grander vision for how you wanted to really see neighborhoods going forward.
Right. I want to talk about, you, you have other things?
I had a couple. Well, you want to wait?
Go ahead. No, go ahead. I think you ought to have your.
Stayed within law, bylaw, the zoning enforcement officer, designated, has the authority to remove any temporary sign unlawfully placed on public property. Without, oh, okay, I'm sorry. That's fine. That was the wrong one.
Yeah.
All signs shall have a date written on them, indicating the date that the sign was installed. Signs without a date shall be removed by the zoning enforcement officer.
It's just like a piece of masking tape with, or something with a sharpie on it.
If we're gonna require that, I, I would rather see it in the file than on a sign.
Do that too.
Something like that because.
Holden does both. Holden requires both having.
Well, I don't, my opinion, again, just my opinion, if somebody pays that kind of money for a sign, and some people pay a lot,
Yeah.
I don't want to put, make them write a date on it. I'd rather have it in a file the day that they pulled the permit and we can look it up.
Agreed, yeah, there could be a picture of the sign with the permit to confirm that it's the same sign.
That would work differently.
I, I would like, I would like that better than making them write a date on it.
Are you thinking that permanent signs, um, are going perpetuity or they get a sign for like five years? What are you thinking about this?
They go until they're either, until the business shudders and to prevent it from becoming a ghost sign, it must be taken down. Uh, a ghost sign is a sign that points to something that's no longer there.
Right.
Or deteriorates.
Or deteriorates or is abandoned for two years or something.
Okay, and what about temporary signs? You get a permit for a temporary sign.
It says, yeah, no temporary signs shall be displayed for more than fourteen days unless otherwise indicated, excluding signs for nonprofit events or efforts.
So excluding things like fundraisers, community events.
But if you go and get a permit, you have to get a permit for a temporary sign.
For a temporary sign, if it's going to be over fourteen days. I believe that's how I put it. The idea is any event lead up to fourteen days, you don't need a permit. Anything that would be temporary, but let's say a month-long event or something, uh, you would need a permit for that. If you were to have a month-long event for whatever.
What if you're, um, a restaurant and you're gonna take it in every night and it's a sandwich board with your menu on it?
That would be a sandwich.
Yeah, it would be a sandwich board, yeah. They'll, they'll be covered under sandwich boards.
And those require a permit?
Um, I don't believe so.
No, they don't.
No, they don't. It depends on where they're zoned, but if they're business commercial, I don't think they believe, I don't think, I don't remember if they put one, I don't think they do.
So the only.
And my question with regards to sandwich boards, because I have seen cities and towns that, uh, is, if if you put it on your own property versus if you put it on a sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
Very different.
Very different.
Uh, uh, attitudes that the town takes or the city takes.
Mm-hmm. It depend, as long as the message contained on that sign is lawful, it's covered by freedom of speech. That's gone all the way up to the Supreme Court and there's precedent.
Correct, but as to whether or not it is on your sidewalk, which is in the town sidewalk.
Yeah.
Or uh, do we have something very specific as to where these signs are allowed?
I believe we do.
I think it is, I don't wanna say.
Are they allowed in commercial dist- are they allowed in residential districts?
Uh, they are allowed in residential, if I recall.
So that, if they're allowed in residential districts, then they're gonna be allowed in all the districts.
I believe, yeah, cause they're the most restrictive, yeah.
So you can put a sandwich sign up?
There's a chart at the back that does have all of this with a yes or no schedule on it. It's, my memory isn't flawless, so it's in that chart.
Right, so so what what is, what is important is to note that any signs that are in place on the premises of. Either the business or the residence.
Mm-hmm.
Versus those that, uh, are put, say, for example, on a sidewalk.
Yeah.
And things on a sidewalk should have a different kind of permit.
I'll put a stipulation on that. I can put a stipulation, uh, provided it's still on their parcel plan as opposed to any sort of sort of public land.
Exactly. Correct, and I think with regards to that, there's something that always comes to my mind, because I see this a lot, especially during the springtime when houses are for sale.
Hmm.
Uh.
Real estate signs.
Real estate signs.
There's a section for.
Yeah, there's a, there's a.
And so the the issue with real estate signs, especially the abandonment of real estate signs, is a huge problem that we, I think, have in some towns.
Yeah, I I agree with that. They get left there.
After the sale, they just kind of sit there as some kind of vestigial thing.
So do you. Are they time set? I think they are, or they were in the old bylaw, I know.
Well, this is this.
Yeah. I believe they're they're time set.
Okay, we'll make sure they are.
I saw two, you were on the page a minute ago where it said.
Was I?
Yeah.
Any contractor or.
Sandwich board signs.
Yeah, there are sandwich board.
The sandwich board, I wanna go back to the sandwich board though.
Pages nineteen, eighteen, it says, you want me to read it?
Go ahead.
Sandwich board signs may be placed on public property with a permit, signs may be dis- displayed during the hours and on days of operation of the business. Placed when on a public sidewalk, curb, curb strip or pavement adjacent to the property owned, leased or used by the applicant. Said sign may not obstruct pedestrian access or movement or vehicle traffic.
So what is important here is is that it does require a permit and therefore, as a result of the permit, there can be stipulations as to where that sign can be placed.
Does require a permit. Absolutely, and to what level it can obstruct things or not.
So sandwich signs, and that's even for events under the fourteen days?
Yes, that's for all of that.
So sandwich signs require a permit?
Uh, sandwich signs, if it's for an event under fourteen days, no. If it's for an event over fourteen days, yes.
Okay.
And on page eleven, permit license section, C, only one signed permit for a sandwich board sign is allowed per business and such such permit is not transferable. Uh, if the signs will be located on adjacent public railway to the business location, business owners shall sign a disclaimer that identify, identifies the town of any liability for use of said public railway. And that, and then it goes about having the insurance.
So the the fourteen days applies whether the sign is on public property. If it's on public property, it requires a permit no matter what.
Yep.
Okay, if it's on private property and it's under fourteen days, it does not.
Exactly, then it's temporary, and it's fine.
Okay, and if you have a a person that's got, say, a home occupation, a sandwich sign, like our consignment shop that's on sixty-eight.
Then it would go into the commercial rules. After the overlay, after the overlay district is done, it would go into the commercial rules, which is still.
But presently, well, present, and and forgetting the grandfathers, if you were gonna start a business, a consignment shop today.
Okay.
Well, and you wanted to put a sandwich board out there and you are in a residential district, what would be the restrictions?
Well, residential district, uh, it's under the chart, I don't have the document in front of me, but you wouldn't be allowed to have, thank you very much.
Sure. You can find it quicker than I can.
No, thanks. Sandwich board is, uh, see, duh 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 duh, um, it's not permissible as of this inside residential, but if it's under a secondary occupation. Then it would be under the commercial rules, which is yes.
Cause we have a, we have a home on sixty-eight that does that now, just out of putting a sandwich.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand what, if we're, if we're gonna.
The sandwich.
But it's very tied up with, our sign, present sign by law is tied up with home occupation, it's a separate category.
Mm-hmm.
And what they're trying to do is get, is kinda disconnect the signs from the home occupation and go at. Home occupations instead of it being a house that's occupied by twenty percent of a building, not more than twenty percent of a building, and run by the people that live there.
Mm-hmm.
To to more of a concept of, um, a business that's compatible in a residential district and to.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, you can't, you can't pave the front yard as a parking lot, you can't, it's gonna be restricted, but it could be fifty percent, it could maybe be a hundred percent. It could be maybe the downstairs is the business, the upstairs is a rented apartment, so they're trying to disconnect the home occupation.
Exactly.
And right now, the home oc- the those signs in residential districts are tied to home occupation, which is true of the consignment lady. So my my question is, that needs to be. Um. Until we get, what happens if you're that person that has the consignment, I mean, maybe it goes under grandfathering, I I don't know.
If it's pre-existing.
But somebody that is a traditional home occupation, um, that doesn't wanna change it.
Okay.
Um, are they still going to be allowed to have a sign that they put in, I'm not arguing it pro or con, I'm just asking, the reality. Are they going to be able to put a sign out every day and take it back in every night?
Yes, yeah, they'll be able to do that. Because at that point, they'll be putting up a new temporary sign under fourteen days. Every day would be a new fourteen day. Every day. As long as they take it down, the next morning they put it back out, they could continue to do that. If it's for, it's if it's for a secondary occupation, um, if it's going to be a long-term sort of thing, they could keep it out twenty-four seven, provided they follow the rules combined for the commercial use issue. That's fine.
Twenty twenty-four seven temporary sign?
Well, if they wanted to put up a sign there instead of taking it in every single day, they could do that, cause that would be under the commercial use.
Yeah.
After we get the.
The o- once we do the overlay.
Over, over.
Yeah, once you do the overlay district.
They could get a special permit.
But but, but the right to put a sandwich board out every day on a residential property.
They could do that.
Would remain, and that's true anywhere in the town, anywhere in town.
That's true anywhere in town. Uh, that said, we would have to change something, cause there's the course of use right there under the chart.
Is that what we want?
It's up to you. This is, these are the discussions that you guys need to have, that's really up to your discretion.
I mean, this is what we need to think.
Right, right.
It depends on what iteration you would like these signs to take within your neighborhood. This is something that there isn't a best pla- pla- planning practice for. Because it's so subjective and every neighborhood is its own thing, it's its own person. And we need to take that, well, you need to take that into account as to what you would like to see, how you envision that being used or abused or nothing.
Right.
And that's up to you to really decide.
I'm just a little concerned that if you say, in residential district. Y- y- you know, let's say you're the accounting person, right? And you have a little one foot square sign that identifies you as a accountant practice, right?
Right.
Okay, so. Tax season, ninety days, you wanna put out a giant sandwich board in front of your house instead for those ninety days.
Right.
Um, I can see that. Maybe that's something we don't, that would it would be, you know, four by four and. Do you, do we really wanna allow that, or do we wanna also say sandwich boards in residential districts. Have to conform to a certain, or temporary signs, it wouldn't be sandwich board, have to cons- can be no bigger than, maybe that's where you get your slightly bigger size.
Yeah, yeah, it would. Dimensional requirements, you can easily put that in, yeah.
Or. Go by a special permit.
That too. You could have them go before, uh, the special permit granting authority, you guys, and apply for that sign permit, because it exceeds the, you know, normal allowances. You could do that as well.
Right.
I could put in a stipulation for that as well.
I think we should put. Dimensional sandwich board signs, because I don't see the planning board having every.
Yeah.
Right, and the more, the more restrictive we make things like that, the more people are gonna ignore the rules.
We're gonna become the sign board.
You know, if you sit there and make him, somebody come before you for every time they wanna put out a sign every tax season, they're not gonna do it, they're gonna put out the sign.
Yeah.
But would they follow a rule that's, it's reasonable, it can't be more than four by four?
Right, that's, yeah, exactly.
It can't be onerous, it can't be mean spirited.
Four feet high and.
Something reasonable and something that doesn't require them to come before us every year to put up the sign.
Well, I was just saying, if they're gonna have a business and they're gonna put it in their residence, they're gonna come for a permit anyways.
Yeah.
Make that, make that all at once, or you get to put your sign out tax season, that's all.
Two birds, yeah.
But then, but, we're still gonna have grandfathered, if you have a house that now has a. Occupation in it and they wanna sell it to somebody who, we're not gonna do away with home occupation, are we?
No, 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 true, home occupations are, that's the future, for lack of a better term. More people are going to be working from home in a greater capacity going forward than, you know.
So our home occupation will exist as it presently exists, but on top of that, there will be forty R.
Exactly.
More than twenty percent of their.
And that requires a special permit.
Right. It's it's there to be flexible for people that live in town but still wanna work in town.
So I, I think then the best way to do this bylaw would be to tie it in again, like we had the old bylaw to home occupation. But we oughta put another provision in that says when forty R comes in.
Is there a way to move the forty R up and in?
Uh, not in the current timeline, those require, um, much more work.
Right.
As every single town, I remember, I worked for five towns.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and every single town has a prorated amount of project hours that you've been allotted.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I haven't really used that many. I had this kind of waiting in the wings, cause this is something that I've wanted to get checked off for quite some time. Cause as soon as I began work here, I went through all the bylaws in all five of my towns. This one stuck out as the most egregious and the most in need of fixing. And so in my own private time, I'm a strange person, I started working on this on my own, because it needed to get done. And, um, I'm glad that we're doing it now. That said, a forty R overlay district is much more time intensive.
Okay.
And it requires much more of a broader scope and much more of a longer lens.
But you can put a placeholder in our sign by law.
Can we have a spot in there for for later?
Absolutely.
So we can leave home occupations.
Just seeing these two things kinda really intertwined, you could move.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the idea is, I was, I I was speaking to Al's before, um, just, I would like to have these two projects kinda work hand in glove.
Right.
One designed to fit in with the other one.
Right, so could we make a stipulation as, in the this section? Point to that.
Yeah, yeah, I can point to if, you know, a forty R, if, or we can actually just direct it to, you know, if overlay districts are enacted, you know, please refer to that, that section, that citation within that document. That's, we can easily direct it to there, uh, before it exists yet. We can do that.
And that would make sense.
Um, kinda building in the links before they actually get there, we can do that.
So, so my suggestion is that where we have permissible signs in residential zones, we do something with home occupations.
Mm-hmm.
Um, rather than throwing it out entirely.
We could, uh, we could easily put a stipulation there that we can kind of divide the the sign that's attached to the home.
And.
One for pure residential to another one that's a secondary use provision for residential. We can do that.
Right, can you do that?
If this sign pertains to a secondary use, it will follow this set of rules, for one that's just pure residential.
Can only have a little, the Smiths live here, right.
For whatever reason you need a sign. Exactly.
Can you do that for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then, and you can keep that definition, home occupation, as long as it's, it built into the bylaws.
Yeah, it's right, and that's what we would work together on the forty R, and kinda knit those together, that's the idea.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so we have to think about, uh, Bill, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, can I throw in my pet thing and then, oh, well, Francois and John?
No, go ahead. I know, I know Francois's been wanting to speak.
No, no, that's all right, it's it's her turn.
I just wanna talk about illuminated signs.
Alice's turn.
Sure.
Yes, yes.
Illuminated signs, this is a big thing to me. Okay, so I think, here's what I think. Present by law says no balloon signs, nothing lit, no internally illuminated signs. The draft doesn't make any provision, as it stood.
Uh, the curve one does, it has a different provision for external illumination and internal or LED illumination.
Okay, can you go through that?
Sure. So the idea for, uh, external versus internal illumination is that external illumination will be permitted, like a, just a light shining downlit or, you know, downlit or uplit. Provided it doesn't provide, as long as it doesn't give you and give off unnecessary glare to, I think it was like twenty-six lumens, whatever the National Highway and Safety Board recommends. That there, it's, it's very discreet, that's a very kind of harmless inert sign of illumination. Versus something that's kind of in your face, shooting right at your eye level, at, you know, a hundred lumens or something really obnoxious. The LED signs, that would be more of an electronic messaging center, which is something in the current bylaw is only permissible by, uh, municipal and nonprofit use. Think of a sign that has a running message going along, you know, uh, dog permits due by April fifteenth, that that sort of thing, or planning board meeting, you know, second, third, whatever it is. Those are things that we need to have by municipal use, but I don't think it fits with the general, uh, neighbors' neighborhood aesthetic. For every particular sign that can afford it, every particular business that can afford it to have an EMC. That's not something that would, it would definitely detract and deteriorate neighborhood character. It's not permissible in any other analogous town, much like Hubbard, it's just not permissible. The closest analog would be Holden, but, uh, shocker, it's permissible only by municipal use only. Because, yeah, I don't know if you guys know Holden, but if you're going down by, uh, where the Commerce Bank used to be, going down Main Street, you have that one municipal sign. The idea is to have something like that is permissible to the town, but for only nonprofit and municipal use. It's really kind of a privilege that only the municipality would enjoy. It wouldn't be something that would be available to any commercial or industrial entity.
Okay, so downlit, uplit signs?
Da- those are both, those are both fine, uh, provided they don't provide unnecessary glare and not shined onto an existing metal sign.
Okay, only in commercial?
Uh, commercial and industrial, commercial and industrial.
Okay, not in residential?
Not in residential.
Okay, and gateway signs, what if we have Madison Green, it's a private development, you'd never find that road if they didn't light up a sign.
Right.
Cause it's a really sharp turn down a hill.
Mm-hmm.
So gateway signs?
That would be permissible. Exter- externally illuminated, either uplit or downlit, is permissible. It's the internal illumination that shines kind of laterally out from the sign.
Yeah. Okay.
That provides the safety and the glare issue.
Okay.
Those that are shot, shown up or shown down, and this way, externally illuminated, does not provide the same amount of glare as something that's an LED shooting right at your face.
Okay.
Think like a Xenon headlight, we want to avoid that effect.
Okay.
One question on, since we're on the subject right now, one just came through the Z B A.
Mm-hmm.
Hearing that was, just hadn't denied, the Lions Club wanted to buy two different signs.
Mm-hmm.
One for right here at the entrance to the town office and the other one would have been at Charlie Clark's corner of High Street and, um. Sixty-eight there.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Which was gonna be for nonprofit and for the town.
Yeah, exactly.
Unfortunately, bad locations.
Bad locations, and that's something that's up to the, if there's, you know, if it goes to the Z B A, it's up for them to adjudicate?
But is there anything provisions in our bylaw that is stipulated to that, cause if we're gonna, if. Somebody comes through and there's a, there's right here on this bylaw, and they wanna put the sign out there. How do we control that? Cause those are bad, both of those are bad locations, I thought, because you got too much going on right here now. So if you're looking at the sign, you're not gonna see the kid over there running on the road, if you're reading a sign. So it's, it's a bad location, it's unsafe. Is it, is there a bylaw? Is there a provision in the?
Not for location, no. But they're only permissible by nonprofit use and municipality use only. So it's really up to the the discretion of the municipality to really cite that and consider that.
I'd like to see something in our bylaw that could, is this a statement or something under that? Because if, the town, right now the town is a good spot up at the Rec Field, but if times change and they want somebody down the road. I'm gonna put it here anyways, cause it's the town. I, I think we should have something in our bylaw that.
That's town property already, right?
Yeah.
So they can't just put a sign on town property without somebody's approval?
Well, the.
The town itself can. The town itself can.
The town itself can put that one out there.
Right.
But it must consider safety, cause that's part of the purposes of the bylaw, so you could peel it and make a recommendation.
I think we should have something in the bylaw. To oversee that.
Uh, what, the location or safety?
Well, something, just something, because if the town could just say, we're gonna put it up there and it goes up there, nobody has any say or anything.
We could consult the chief of police and have them also sign off on that.
From a safety perspective.
From, exactly, from a safety and kind of a, like a traffic safety perspective.
So a good, a, a, a good situation would be is there's anything close to a school.
Yeah.
Or anything close to the fire department, that might detract the.
Even to a, a crosswalk, you know, if it's within, you know, twenty yards of a crosswalk or forty yard, whatever the number you guys decide.
But that then becomes the discretion of the uh, chief of police.
Exactly, because that's a public safety concern, that would make sense. Uh, that's something I hadn't thought of, but it makes a lot of sense. We can easily put that in.
You know, during that, that came up and that was the first thing I was concerned about, the, the two locations, that was approved by everybody in town.
Yep.
Uh, I didn't think it was a good, it's not a spot, cause they wanted to advertise right here. And you've got school in the morning and the afternoon, there's a lot of, there's a lot of traffic, um. I've almost been hit doing the crosswalk in front of my house at least once a week, cause people don't pay attention. You put one of those up, that's gonna make it worse.
Yes, and the novelty of the new, like, the, the new sign will draw more eye attention, uh, the first one here or so.
Second, second question here.
Sure.
Um, if you're not gonna, if we're gonna try to, the town center zone, right?
Yeah.
If we're gonna try to use that to, say, have a restaurant, to try to. I mean, there's a few more uses allowed, not much.
Sure.
But would they not need illuminated signs too? How can you have a restaurant that's open, like. In the winter and they open their business at six o'clock and they don't have an illuminated sign?
Well, internally or externally, like a lit sign is when that's just shown, externally, okay, like a lit sign is one that just has light shown on it. Illuminated confers like the internal illumination.
Okay, a lit sign?
Yeah.
Okay, but you said they wouldn't be allowed in residential zones. Are they gonna be allowed in?
Town centers.
Town center zone?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are allowed in town center zones.
Okay, and then last question, uh, internal signs, which is signs you put on the inside of your window.
Current best, current best practice to have no more than fifty percent of the window square footage being used for the purpose of that sign. That's, that's the maximum, that's the current best practice.
What if it's a store and they have a lot of different brands in the store and they all wanna put lights up, they can't.
It would be a combined, so if, say for example, it's a convenience store and you have all these different cigarette brands or. Alka- alcohol brands or whatever, uh, the combined amassed total of those illuminated signs cannot, or should not. Uh, go over fifty percent of the square footage of their sign, of their, of their window face.
You're saying illumin- illuminated sign?
Illuminated signs, yes.
So they can have paper signs inside the window?
If they so chose.
And they can have illuminated signs inside the window?
Yeah, they can have fifty percent, you know, not illuminated and fifty percent illuminated.
But they can't have neon, or neon lookalike, LED?
Lookalikes or any cathode type of thing now.
Okay, so you can't have your little Coors beer in the bar?
No, you can't have like the, you know, the neon signs with all the noble gases that are all illuminated, you can't have those. Those are a safety and environmental.
So how, and they can't be internally illuminated?
No, they would.
How, how would they be illuminated if they're in a window?
Those are very small. I don't, that's a, that's one of the what ifs that would go before the ZBA. Because that's not something that can reasonably be anticipated. If it's one third, one fifth, two thirds, it's very kind of subjective.
So our regulation would say, would prohibit window signs of any kind that exclude, that cover more than fifty percent of the window.
But you could have an open sign, that was illuminated.
And it, and it would forbid illuminated signs, and it would forbid neon signs.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to have the old traditional kind of glass tubing that says open, that sort of thing, cause those cast off a lot of lumens and they're very distracting to the eye.
But an LED would be?
Oh, that's the, that, that's why they're judged under the same sort of thing. That's why you need to.
An LED open sign?
Not, not an LED open sign, that's, you know, large.
Half the businesses in town already have that.
They all have that.
Yeah.
We could, we could.
And I'm not sure that we should tell them.
We could, we could have illuminated signs under one square foot.
Yes, yes.
I think, I think that ha- that have not being allowed to have.
In commercial zones.
Exactly.
Probably just a lot of them have a lot of window signs, cover all the windows.
Right, now that.
Use the whole space.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Which, I'm not against that.
Window signs under a foot.
Yeah. We could easily put that, this is why we have these discussions.
I think an open sign is perfectly reasonable.
So if you wanna advertise all your brands.
Open or, or one of this, I know Barry now has a, has, a restaurant scene is pretty vibrant.
Yeah.
And one of their bars has a small LED sign, it's about. It's not the icebox, so it's the one on the other end of the common, but I would say it's six inches by a foot, a foot.
All different signs.
Maybe up, maybe one, one illuminated sign per.
One illuminated sight, one illuminated sign up to one square foot, or something like that.
Into internal sign. What do you think?
I have a concern about it, because again, depending on the distance that you are from the road, I mean, it's a very different thing that if you are, say for example, the gas station here. Versus if you are the pizza parlor. And the distance, a one foot square uh, illuminated sign from, for the pizza parlor. Might not necessarily be adequate compared to a one foot square at the gas station.
Exactly, there are some subjectivity here and that's why we have the ZBA as the reinforcement.
So that's why you're saying you think we should allow bigger, and Bill, what would you?
I'm, I'm just concerned that by restricting it to one foot, I mean, one foot is not a lot.
No, it's not, it's really.
And, and, and which is, which is fine, for, in, in most cases, they're, they're, they're fairly obvious, because they're either in blue or they're red. And you can kind of see, especially in the dark.
Were you also saying?
But where I'm going with this here is, is that when you are, say for example, close to the pizza uh, palace. Uh, because of the distance that the pizza palace is from the road, it's not very easily seen.
I mean, I'm not here to uh, kind of advocate for one size or another. I'm here to just inform you what the current best practice is and why.
I, I clearly understand that. I, my, my, my concern here is, is that by us imposing something that is one square foot. I'm not saying it should be five square feet, I'm just simply saying is, is that, eh, we need to think about what is reasonable.
Yeah.
And what is reasonable based in the context of where these businesses are operating. I mean, for them to show that they're open is an important element.
Oh yeah.
Right, and that's a good point, most open signs are at least eighteen, eighteen inches long, so a foot, square foot is, is not gonna cover that.
And another comment I wanted to make, if it's not impeding onto the road, the signage, and they wanna use their whole window.
Well, that, that was an interesting point, because if you go in, right across from the uh, gas station, there's a number of shops. That you cannot even see from the, well, most of them you cannot see from the road, especially if they're, if they're way in. And, and as to whether or not, what does that mean to a place like that? I mean, are we imposing on them the ability or the inability to advertise themselves, as either open or not?
Anything pre-existing is not covered by this, by this bylaw that we're crafting. Anything that's grandfathered in is just exempt from anything here.
Well, my other, my other thought is on that, I don't wanna hurt somebody who wants to open a business tomorrow, once we have this bylaw. And if they are not, their sign was not gonna affect traffic. I don't think we should control how much they wanna put in their window.
Again, I think we need to be very careful though, because if you are the neighbor. If you are a neighbor, say for example, you have a neighbor suddenly that has commercial, because you live, for example, in the commercial zone. And somebody puts up a very big sign.
What if we hit, put a section in here for appeal, something? But I, I don't think of it, it's my business and I'm on this strip right here and I'm not facing the road whatsoever. And I wanna use all of my window space to advertise for all my.
Yeah, but your neighbor that's facing you.
Well, what if there's nobody over there? I'm just saying, I don't wanna constrict this so much.
You're, you're right, but at the same time, let's keep in mind that, I mean, you can go down rat's holes very easily.
All I'm saying is, how do we balance that?
Bill, usually you have, you'd have a ladder sign, like at the breezy corner. I think there's one in town too. And that can be illuminated, right? So you list the four buildings that are in the cross, the mall that goes this way. And you put it on the street and you like them.
Some of these stores, they have all that stuff in their windows now.
There are different dimensional uh, allowances for uh, I think like uh, Breezy Hill, where they have different commercial tenants within this one strip mall.
Right.
Uh, they have a much larger accommodation pool in terms of height and in terms of width, and that's something to reflect.
So that's why people don't fly by it, and then once you've turned into the parking lot, then you're gonna be able to see that eighteen inch by six inch open sign, right? So you don't have to be able to see it from the main road, then it would really be. I, I, I think the fifty percent is pretty generous personally.
So do I, um, and it, it, there's a reason.
Cause you want light in the room building, you don't want.
It's also to provide for folks that are walking by, it attracts foot traffic, and you can look inside and see other people shopping and browsing. You see that activity, but gets more activity.
I just don't like too much control.
I agree with you.
But that's, that's my biggest fear here.
Inside their own business.
Exactly.
That's, that's their business, if they wanna put their signs in their windows.
Yeah.
Why should we say, tell them no, it's not affecting anybody? I don't, that's why I, I don't like too much. Government footprint saying you can't do this, and now from now on, you can't turn your door now to the left, you gotta go to the right. I, I don't like, we, I don't want anything.
Goes to the right?
No, I'm just saying, I don't want anything too, too restrictive.
The present sign by, the present by law that we have in effect, does not allow any neon, neon lookalikes, none.
Right.
And does regulate internal window signs. So. I don't know, you're trying to, you're trying to hit, hit it right, you know?
We're really trying to.
I wanna find a balance, I don't wanna hurt anybody, and I don't wanna make anything bad for anybody, but I don't wanna take away, if it's their business, and it doesn't affect.
If it's pre-existing, it's not going to.
Well, it's not even that, if, if it was on the main road, and we, we are worried about the light hitting people and not being right, but I think if a person has a business. And they wanna fill their windows up with non.
Illuminated signs.
With signs, why, we, I don't think we, we should tell them no.
You would let them go, cover an entire plate glass window from floor to ceiling. See, I think that's a really, it is an aesthetically bad look.
I, I think so too.
So make it fifty percent and keep it.
Right, do we have the right?
It's not our choice.
Well, we do, we do have that right.
No, but I don't think.
We can't take away their right.
Well, we are, we're taking it away.
But they can put out sandwich boards, they can put out window signs, but they can't put out big neon signs and they can't plaster their whole window. They can put a sign on the side of a wall.
We could go down the authority to tell them what they can put up in their own private property?
Yes, yes.
We do have that authority, okay.
Up to the Supreme Court, yes we do. As long as we're not taking away their right to express themselves, like what they're allowed to say, we can't tell them what font the sign can be in.
I just don't, I don't want our community to turn into some of these folks that are east of here, where you have to paint your house once a year a certain color.
For a local conservation district, yeah.
All I'm saying is, I, I don't think, I don't want Hubbardson to turn.
Why don't we try to let him thread the needle?
Yeah, that's, that's, it requires a really kind of a judicious and a light touch, more finesse than a sledgehammer.
Right.
We're not gonna go slamming down in one way or the other. It really requires a bit of a balancing act.
Okay.
Um, it helps having an, an informed and involved board, which you guys are, and a planner that's familiar with the neighborhood. I'm, I'm a, I'm a local here, this is what I do.
See.
And we'll be able to strike that balance, and we won't be too onerous and we won't be too laissez faire. You have to really hit that middle spot. But in order to hit that sweet spot better, I need to work with you guys quite a bit. So as long as you guys don't mind working with me, and to get this crafted really perfectly. Then we'll be just great.
I think, I think you're hearing the concern that we have, and there's this, how do we, how do we through a, how do, how do we through a bylaw. Reach that kind of a balance and yet that flexibility? So I think the flexibility component is important, because there's four individuals here, I mean Craig is not here, but I mean, we represent different points of view. And then obviously when this goes to the larger population, once this, this goes in, we'll probably get a lot more feedback.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And, and, and potentially push back or, or encouragement even. Uh, so I think we need to be very, we need to be careful in terms of how we draft it. By allowing certain flexibilities, but at the same time, that flexibility needs to kind of contain walls.
Yeah.
Left and right that we can kind of, guardrails, as, as you call them, which I think is very important.
Um, it's important not to get too overly specific, because there's a reason we have the ZBA in place.
Yeah.
There's a reason, we, we can water up ourselves until nothing gets done. We need to really start thinking broader vision. And the way that we're gonna help facilitate the neighborhood that we wanna live in. That's the big part. Livability to me trumps almost anything else. Keeping that neighborhood aesthetic, keeping a neighborhood that works for everybody involved.
Sure.
And these, these are things that are pretty universal. Everyone wants to live in a more livable town. They want to live in a place that reminds them of why they're here in the first place, but also allows them to work. And going into the future, that's going to be the way that, the way that people go to work. They're gonna be working from home more often than not. Going to the next ten to fifteen to twenty years, telecommuting and working from home is going to be super important. And we need to, if we're responsible enough, get those guardrails in place now, so that way we have our collective act together when more people choose to join this community. That's the main idea.
Just wanna make a small comment in terms of what you're doing, because I think it's really important. I think that working from home is, is truly a, a, a. I work from home, very good example. But there's a very big difference between working from home and providing a service through your home.
True.
To individuals who come and visit, be that a daycare, be that a dentist, be that a physician, be that psychotherapist, whatever, okay? Versus my employer allows me to work from home.
Yeah.
And so I think one of, the reason I bring this up is very subtle, because at this point in time, what we're really, really talking about. Is, is for those individuals who are providing a service in their home. That bring individuals to their home and therefore the service is provided within their home.
On site.
So it's not like I work on my computer with, you know, a client that is in Philadelphia or is in Brussels or wherever it is, right? So yes, we, we need to keep that slight difference, and the reason I'm saying that is, is because again. If we're going to be allowing home businesses to advertise themselves, we need to at some point in time define what that is.
Yeah.
Okay?
And that's, that's the conversation for the forty yard overlay.
Yeah.
That's when they get into.
I, I, I know that, but I wanna preamble this here, because you yourself said, principles of smart growth.
I'm with you, yeah.
And urbanism, we need to make sure that we are addressing that.
Right.
I did have some questions myself, unless you're.
Sure, go ahead, your turn.
I did have a question in regards to the general requirements. The, uh, section A says forfeitures of, of signs. Any sign installed and placed in public property except in conformance with the general requirements will be removed without notice. Does this mean that Alice and I are gonna be going around town picking up notice?
This should be done by the zoning enforcement officer, unless you wanna just throw them in the back of your truck.
So I, I, I think, I think we need to at some point in time define what that is and who that is.
That would be the zoning enforcement officer, they would be the ones that would be kind of being the policeman for this sort of thing.
Okay, so, eh, eh, I think, and I don't know if this, is that, is that clearly?
Yeah, it's classified under the zoning enforcement, they're, they're responsible for enforcing that. It's later on in the document, which is why we've reorganized, well, it's why I've reorganized the flow of it.
Okay.
But it is stipulated in it.
Very good.
Yeah, I would read that.
I want to go back onto the real estate signs.
Sure.
Uh, and the reason is, is because I still, and let's play out the picture, I'm trying to understand how the real estate signs, which are. Uh, you know, the, the signs must follow the items on the general requirements, which, one of the items which I've, I've read here. How does a real estate agent who is trying to sell a home here in, in Hubbardson, bound by the real estate signs? So I'm thinking about not only the signs that individuals can have in their property, to advertise that, that property is for sale. But for all intents and purposes, the signs that are sometimes splattered around the roads. And uh, sometimes are two miles away and, you know, they, they, they hook you through this road and then. A mile down, there's another one of those signs, it's like, it's almost, for, for the open house, and it's like. Where, wh- wh- where does that whole thing fit in based on this here? Because that's more, the more prevalent. Case in point that I can think of right now.
That would be handled by the zoning enforcement officer, but any Realtor worth his or her salt would look up where they're allowed to advertise their particular property.
The property itself.
Yeah, property, yeah, they would, they, it would be incumbent upon them to research what is permissible and what isn't, and under what restrictions they must abide.
But that's based on the barrier by law.
Yeah, it's based on the by law.
So my question here is, is, given that scenario. Would for example, the signs that we are seeing sometimes on the corner of Brigham Street and uh, Hillville Road, which is where I live, as, as an example.
Okay.
Uh, would a sign by a Realtor on public land be permissible? Or on the corner of Old Princeton Road and uh, and, 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 and Simon Hill Road, as an example. Uh, you know, showing, hey, you know, take, take it right here.
That's usually was a day thing though, it's not.
Oh, no, 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 these are not day things. These are, these are things that are, oh, they, some of them have been out there for.
Months.
A month or two months.
Those would get removed by the zoning enforcement officer.
Those are temporary signs, past the fourteen days they can remove.
Those would get cleaned up by the CEO, the zoning enforcement officer, as, as, just as a housekeeping service, that's what they would be doing.
Telephone pole, ten acres for sale, arrow that way, nowhere near.
I mean, I don't know if, I, I may have, I know I have it in my current draft, I don't know if it's in this draft where it's not permissible to put signs onto a public utility.
I think you could keep that provision.
Yeah.
If it's not in it.
So, uh, uh, again, I'm just trying to understand, are they, or are they not allowed?
Uh, they are not allowed if they're gonna be going more than fourteen days.
So where does that come under the general requirements of fourteen, so, so not, this is temporary, this is the temporary sign shall be displayed for not more than fourteen days.
And they, and they can't be on a pole.
And they can't be on a public service utility pole, or on public furniture or something like that.
Yeah.
So if we were installing some really nice benches or something, for example, and they wanted to bolt it to that or strap it to that somehow, that's not, that's not permissible.
Okay.
It really tears at the fabric of, of town center.
Yeah.
So, I'm with you.
So we have signs allowed on public property by right, you should have also towns, so, signs prohibited on public property or something.
We could, we could definitely add a category of real estate signs, any other sort of uh, product advertisement.
Put it in somewhere.
Also impacts people's home occupations as well, so it's gonna have more, it's gonna have some repercussions, so we need to be very precise in how we word these things.
Home occupations though are limited to the sign, placement of the signs to the person's property. Or to the immediately adjacent public right away. So that isn't the same problem Francois's talking about.
Well, we could, we could put that right in your real estate signs section.
We could easily put that there too.
I would just put it in there to stipulate.
Put it under real estate signs.
And how would you word it?
Uh, for open house signs, for sale signs preceding the closing of the property.
How about advertising a, a real estate?
Shall not be beyond the border of the properties being, being sold.
Unless it's a temporary. If they wanna have an open house, I don't have a problem with them putting a couple of signs up to show people where to go.
And provided that's removed before the closing of the sale or something along that line.
Although, an open house usually goes for one, one day.
Like after, yeah, after the, after the sale closes.
If they wanna put them up for, for their open house today, and then when they're done, at the end of the day, they pick them up and go home. They wanna have an open house tomorrow, they put them out. And at the end of the day, they pick them up and go home.
It's important, it's important that we don't try to accommodate for every what if scenario, because it's, it's not.
The problem we have here is, is we're a very rural area. If you live in a city, they're very strict about that.
Oh yeah.
And it's like, you know, you have two hours to put your sign, this is the hours for your open, uh, of your open house.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, they do.
When I was in Franklin, we had a zoning enforcement officer forty hours a week, that's all that this junior planner did, was zoning enforcement.
Where was this?
This is in Franklin, Mass, right between Boston and Providence.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's all he would do. He would come in, check with me, say, oh yeah, I got a couple of calls about this Kinko's sign, it's like halfway hanging over into the, into the driveway. That's all he would do, he would come in, check with me, say, oh yeah, I got a couple of calls about this Kinko's sign, it's like halfway hanging over into the into the driveway. Take care of it and he would zip down there, this college kid would zip down there, pull it up, let the person know, hey, we've removed your sign because it's not conforming with the rules, here's the rules. You know, come down to my office, you'll pay the fine, whatever it is.
We're we're holding, we're holding you hostage.
Pretty pretty much, like the sign would be discarded if they didn't pay the fine, but they'd have to settle up anyway.
No, I understand. That is the, that is the essence of the problem, that we have a rural area where. I mean, it takes time to find some of these places, I mean, even though the technology is getting a lot better. But I will al- also be honest with you, I think that some realtors are just either either they're lazy. They're probably either bad actors or forgetful, I don't wanna call them lazy, I I wanna say they're they're forgetful. And it can it can easily happen, you know, you sometimes put ten signs out there.
You pick back seventeen.
Well, I got nine of them, where's the other one?
But those people will do it regardless of what it says in the bylaw.
But those are, those are the bad actors.
At least if you take them up, you live in the neighborhood, nobody can come after you, you know, you say.
And that's something that the zoning enforcement officer or some other concerned would have the ability to do.
The other thing that really does concern me and I again is if we are putting signs in public places, we need to be very careful as to where it is that we allow that. And I'll just give you again an example, we are putting them, say for example. We put them against guardrails or something of that nature versus if we put them in a. Uh, you know, on the sidewalk itself where somebody could theoretically trip or things of that nature. The aesthetics is one issue, but I think the public safety component is very important. I mean, I'm 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 saddened that Craig could not be here tonight because I think he could probably add some value to this here from DPW perspective. In terms of the work that they do, I mean, maybe you as a, you know, as a former police officer or a detail person, uh, who who does details. You you can, you can understand what 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 the sign in the wrong place can potentially do.
Oh, quite quite so, huh?
E- exactly.
People can get hurt or even killed if a car accident happens because of the trucks or blinds.
Exactly, and so I think from from my perspective, I'd like to personally see something that. In some ways indicates, and I think it's hard because you can, just how do you build all the exceptions? Or how do you build all of those rules, and I don't wanna be like the Germans to say everything is verboten, you know, instead I wanna be sort of like. Let's use common sense as to where does it make sense to put signs. Realty, realtors are are business and we we definitely need to allow businesses to 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 thrive. But at the same time, responsible individuals need to also conduct themselves in a responsible manner.
My father's from Dortmund, he can yell, like if you cross the street. Outside of the crosswalk, old ladies will open their door and men and yell at you, they will like scold you publicly if you cross the street. Oh yeah, they will be like, what are you doing? Do you wanna get hit, this is how you get hit.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I don't think John's had a chance to really say everything you wanna say, is there more thing you? Are you happy?
Comments I had, they would already covered and then anything else.
Yeah, I don't want anything to go unsaid here.
I would like to bring this to an end because I don't wanna stay past eight thirty too much and we got a fair amount of things on the agenda. So, um, Christina maybe can type up for the essence, the comments.
Fantastic, that would be super helpful.
And email them to all of us. Can you do that?
Yep.
Yep. And, um.
I can give this back to you.
Then you can get in touch with Christina when you're ready to come back.
Sure, I should have this ready for the next month's meeting.
Next month is only two weeks away.
Two weeks away, I could prob- I'll try to get it for two weeks from now, cuz I I have four other irons in the fire.
Remember, this is our third week meeting, you know, so that's the.
I'll try to get it done for next month or next next two weeks from now, I can't guarantee it, but I will make my level best effort to make sure that happens.
We'll give you a space holder and then you notify Christina, okay, on the agenda.
And a and a nice job, thank you.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it, thank you. I know, this, trust me, I love this stuff more than just about anything and signed bylaws are not the most exciting stuff out there, I know, and I apologize.
But we had the discussion, that was good.
All right, we need to, this is, this is the, I don't know, I feel like we're planning board and we're actually planning things, the next thing is benchmarking. So, so this is a handout that's the benchmarking homeworks in the package. So this was, I know you can probably blame me, I don't know how much work other people have put into this. But I think we need some, I thought we needed some kind of a a way to compare our thoughts and pull our thoughts together and. Respond and benchmarking from an economic perspective was all about, which is. Uh, our town manager was all about numbers, right, well, we can't set numerical targets. So I said, well, why don't we pick of some of the towns that we're all familiar with. And these were towns that I guess Christina can say these are suggested by people, right, these towns.
Or everyone's discussed or presented on other uh benchmarking discussions.
We've talked about some of these towns from the past.
Right, so if we could come up with sort of attributes, do you wanna see in a town, I had five, there's no magic thing about five, it could be more. But and then rate towns of our impression of of those things. Um, so what we're looking for is some attributes and we can suggest them and we can see if we can consolidate them. And if it winds up being seven or eight, but and then my thinking was, she explained in the handout. Is that you would sort of rate rate the towns in those several categories between one and five, right? Then we'd come up and this would in theory give us, um, where we have Hubbardson in the middle of the pack. What we think, you know, Hubbardson is low on and high on, and then the theory here is that then that's what the town administrator and the select board. Would like to build in to our future, are looking forward particularly with the master plan. So, um. I mean, you can each suggest your five, I don't know that they're gonna be so different, but um, I had thought. Schools would be one, if I had to pick them, um, I picked schools, amenities, services slash. Uh, scenic beauty, open space, streets and infrastructure, business opportunity, arts, culture, affordable housing, things like that. So if we can come down to some of them that we can agree on.
I think I like what you're saying, you know, another one I think is really important that I think we're lacking on in here in Hubbardson. Cause I've talked, I I know a lot of folks here and talked to a lot of them, and one of the biggest things that's come up with old folks and younger folks. Is we don't have a downtown, we don't have a nice town center.
Right.
Uh, you go to Berry, you go to, um, oh, what what other town that I, Westbrook Field, I think it was, they have a beautiful.
I think you're speaking to more like a walkable neighborhood, something that can be accessible to those at the young end of the scale and those that are the old, the right hand side of the scale. Something that's walkable and accessible to everyone.
Well, the biggest thing, and I kind of agreed with it because I I know a few of these communities, you drive into their downtown, it was just like.
There's a town center.
They have a, they have a wonderful town center thing, we don't have that, we have a common, it's very small.
Correct, I mean, all the, all the big activities that we have here are at are are common.
Or the Redfield.
Oh, Direct Field, I'm sorry.
But I I wish.
Is it the amenities you're looking for or the walkability?
I I think for a future thought idea to have in our in our plan- planning board, agenda and the background minds. Well, how could we make it better, we can't make the one bigger that we have now unless we buy all the property up and make it wider or do we move it somewhere?
The best way to increase and facilitate walkability is to just simply build the infrastructure. This is one of those rare circumstances where if you build it, they will come, it's true. If people feel that they're able to walk or they're able to bike safely and effectively and efficiently, that will happen organically. That's the one thing that we can do here at the municipal level is facilitate those infrastructure projects.
And I and I agree with that, but we have no way to bring them.
We need to have more attractions.
Which we don't have, I think that's, I think that's really important cuz I've heard numerous people say that to me.
Well, let's not try to figure out how to do it in Hubbardston, let's try, is one, so one of ours would be vibrant town center. Okay, so that could be one attribute, everybody agree with that description? Vibrant town center, okay, do, does everybody wanna leave schools?
I I think schools is important.
Okay, so schools one, vibrant town center, do we wanna do streets and infrastructure then or?
Well, streets, I don't know, infrastructure as far as what, uh, what do you?
Like sidewalks and.
Like complete streets, something that facilitates.
Streetlights maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, streetlights people like, but that would only be in a certain, that would be in a small area cuz.
Well, street, streets would be town wide.
Right, like every road, you know, the unpaved roads, the potholes.
Uh, people want nicer roads in the community, yeah.
Okay, let's let's put streets infrastructure.
I like the amenities.
Amenities.
I mean, for me, it's something that I hear a lot, I wish I had a barber shop, I wish I had a pharmacy, I wish I had a coffee. Shop or a laundry mat or, that's what I think of amenities and I hear that a lot from individuals, so I think that's an important one.
That has an important impact to ec- local economic development, it prevent, it's it prevents leakage. Cuz right now, I live in Gardner, right off sixty eight, I hate living in Gardner, but it is awfully convenient. In the sense where I can get almost everything my family needs in a four minute drive, less than three minutes, but.
Here, you gotta drive ten miles minimum to get to a place like that.
Exactly, I grew up in Okem, right off Spencer Road, I needed to drive forty minutes to do anything. So every grocery store shop was a big shop, I couldn't run out and get asparagus if I was in the mood for asparagus. Because it wasn't able to be done.
Right.
Um, having that convenience in a way that doesn't deteriorate deteriorate local neighborhood characters, something that's really what smart growth is about.
So amenities kinda summarizes that, we all know what that would be.
Open space.
Open space, what do you think about open space?
I think it's important.
I think it's a very important one and a lot of people move here because of the open space.
And that's what Hubbardson is.
I had, I had also arts and culture and affordable housing, I don't know, what do you guys want?
So do you want us to rank them?
I just wanna get our list in, it doesn't have to be five.
No, what I'm saying is is that, I mean, if you wanna do it this way.
Yeah, well.
Should we just take rank five uh out of the full list that we have and then say, you know, does this make sense to put as as our attributes?
Right, or you can put a sixth column in them, I don't care, but you know, you're gonna be X-ing boxes and you don't wanna make it so big, you're not gonna fill it out, right?
Let's force, let's force rank this here.
Okay, so we have right now schools, vibrant town centers, streets, infrastructure, open space, amenities.
We need something about businesses as well.
Uh, or business opportunity. Okay, we can, we can, we don't have to keep them all, let's get them out and then we can nick some of them off.
Now, what about highway, public safety, fire, police and all that, is that?
Those would be under, those would be core services.
Do we need to put that down?
Would that, could that include streets, maintenance?
Uh, maintenance likes the like the condition of streets, yeah, you could do that.
Under core services?
That would be under core services.
All right, let's do instead of streets and sidewalks.
Services also includes.
Core services, no, it wouldn't include schools.
Okay, so it's interesting because I'm looking at it, no, I'm loo- no, no, I'm looking at it as a as a broad category. If you have a community that has a good fire department, has a good police department, has good schools, that's how I'm looking at it, but you obviously looking at it very differently.
It it creates the attractiveness of people wanting to become neighbors.
Would you bake schools a separate category from core services?
Personally, I.
I would.
I would consider them a core service, I consider a teacher just as important as a cop or firefighter, to me, they're all, or a nurse, they're all equally valuable to society in my eyes.
What if we label it?
Discipline does put them off into its own category, however, it's pretty.
I think a town can have a wonderful school system and horrible roads.
Oh, totally, yeah.
Or vice versa, so I think.
Why don't we, why don't we put the police, fires and highway in one section and put schools in all of them?
Okay, so core services and schools.
One A through F grade on all the municipal services, cuz each one is its own beast.
Right.
However, they are equally important.
What can we call that as a group?
I would just call that municipal services.
There we go, how's that sound?
Municipal services.
That wouldn't.
You could divide that up, you could chop that up into five slices if you wanted, but I would call that, I would label services. And I'm working with Berry now cuz they're starting to like shop out their fire and EMS services. And they're gonna be supporting Berry, but New Braintree also wants a piece and it does detract from the desirability to move into that town.
Right, because.
Cuz who would want to move into New Braintree, for example, when their fire department is two towns away? If your house is burning down, you don't want the the fire department to be eighteen miles off.
Well, and also, the schools only K through one, pre-K through one, who wants to live in a town with a school, pre-K through one.
So that's, that's another aging in place discussion, that's a totally different animal, but municipal services and the lack thereof certainly cuts the desirability to live there. That desirability cuts at housing prices, everything is centered on housing prices and tax letting. So that desirability is incredibly big and we need to maintain that desirability.
So what else is on your list?
All right, do we want, I had, we could, I suppose with, the other two things I had were arts and culture and affordable housing. But we could not not write them if you want, but we could put in our plug for affordable housing too because. We're we're supposed to be the affordable housing people and we're the only town on this list that has no affordable housing, I think.
And it's, I wrote the house, the the housing protection plan for Franklin, housing is, if I had a specialty, it would be housing and housing policy. It's important to differentiate and know the difference between subsidized housing and affordable housing and workforce housing. Because all subsidized housing is by definition affordable, but all affordable housing isn't subsidized. It just means if you have a an average job in the town, if you're a cop in the town you work for, you should be able to live in the town you work for. If you're a teacher in Franklin, you should be able to live in Franklin, right now, that is not the case. Um, that's what the term affordable housing means, uh, it's kind of deceptive and it's unclear. So it would be simpler if we messaged it as to say workforce housing. If you're an average person participating in the workforce, you're you're entitled to have access to at least wa- buying a house if you chose to. Or a condo if you chose to, something that's not intentionally out of reach or with onerous, you know, really onerous building just building restrictions. Requiring a six acre minimum or only having six building permits a year, uh, Okem has nine a year. Um, that's their way of maintaining and restricting growth, but it does lock everyone else out that isn't really native to the area already. And that's something that this area needs is new neighbors.
I I think affordable housing might be important.
We can, we can label it workforce housing to make it distinguishable from project, I think people can get projects.
Make it a little more broader.
Exactly, it's more of an umbrella term, it doesn't have all the baggage that affordable housing comes with it because it's doesn't really shake, take that shape. It's it's very almost deceptive to say affordable housing because it comes with strings that aren't always there. Yeah.
Negative connotations.
Negative connotations that it's just not worth that in messaging because it's 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 incomplete.
Do you want, and the other thing I had was arts and culture, we did all those, we'd be ranking on eight criteria instead of five. Do you think arts and culture are important? I think they make some towns around here.
I think that might fall into the attractions, in my opinion, but.
Oh, amenities, amenities.
That's sorry, that's what I meant, amenities.
What do you think, they fit into your amenities, I think it's different, but but maybe it could be, what do you think?
In a broad context, yes, you could put it there.
You could, all right.
Yeah, let's do that.
I would say arts and culture, depending on the the impact and how large of an identity a town places in their arts and culture. A town like North Hampton or Hadley would have much more of an arts and culture impetus to it because it has Masmoka, for example.
Or Lennox or places like that, yeah.
You get the idea, um, it depends on how much uh resources the town places and how much identity it derives from its arts and culture presence. If we had, it's like uh events like Start on the Street or that new one they just did in Spencer, that's pretty much a an imitation of Start on the Street. If we had yearly events like that, but we really put a lot of our time and effort and resources into fostering arts and culture, that could be a core service and. If the town was based on it, we could do that, aside from that, it's really just a a, it's 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 an addition to, it's an embellishment of the town.
Um, and what about open space, do we wanna leave open space, I think it's a huge thing.
For me, this is very important, personally, I think a lot of people have mentioned that as to the reason why they come to this town.
So if if she, if I had Christina put a new template together that said, just like this.
Yeah, with the seven categories at the top.
With the seven categories, and do you wanna write it A through F or one through five?
One through five, right.
One through five?
One through six or whatever F is.
Oh, one, one.
One through six is F. It's a hexadecimal.
What's the cla- the classic is one through five these days, isn't it?
What's like Christina, pick it up for us.
All right, Christina, you tell us how we rate it, but don't give us too many choices.
One through thirty seven.
There we go, so I'm going to rate it, are these towns okay with you, I wanna make sure before I go and do the the entire thing and then. Send it out to you, do these towns are any, there more that you would prefer on this list?
I think Fitch, Fitchburg is too big.
I think Garden is too big, um.
We're supposed to have negative towns as well.
I like Northbrook Field, um.
Don't want to become as equally as Bart.
Cause we don't wanna become Pittsburgh, we don't wanna become.
Northbrook Field, uh, Westbrook Field, those are communities that I, they pop in my head, I like some of the things they have, I wouldn't mind seeing them on there. Cause I wouldn't, as far as I'm concerned, um. Guyder and Fitchburg, I, and even Athol, they're a lot bigger, um. I don't know, but is this, is this the list from the town manager we have to go by?
No, this is, this is just a list I compiled from all of the uh discussions we've had on benchmarking.
Okay, I'd rather see some of these other ones, I don't know some of these ones on this list here, but, um.
I think ge- geographically speaking, these are a lot closer than what the original list was.
Okay, yes.
Which I like, even though, I mean, the other one had Lennox and Laney, they were pretty far out, you know, great parenting.
No, I just did, um, the, as I said, the ones we've discussed in meetings and then we had the original list and then I was like, some of these are pretty far out.
So I guess my my question though is is this here, I mean, you had, this list I thought was because kind of Hubbardson fit the mold of these types of towns.
Right.
There are some towns here that. There are some towns that albeit were are closer, were not in the original list, my question is is. Should we still be comparing ourselves against like, for example, like an Athol because Athol was not in the original town, was there a reason why Athol was originally left out?
The reason that list got populated was Alice.
Oh, okay.
What, 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 did I mix, what were, where was that list from?
That was the original list and you came to see, you told me that when, at the last meeting, the two grow towards and two avoid were. Uh, Xed out and then you and I went down, you said that you didn't, um, some of those were too far out or you didn't know them, and then you added Athol and a couple of others.
All right, we should go through it, I don't, I don't know, there are some towns, I don't know, there may be some towns you don't know.
This town, I just wanna make sure that, I'm just, I'm trying to make sure that we're, we're we're doing what we were asked to do by the town administrator.
I I think Ashburnham is still.
Okay.
You wanna put Ashburnham in, okay.
I would, I don't think there's a, we need to look at Athol, do you? It's a totally different community.
Right, but the only reason I would say to have some of those types of towns here is to say that we don't wanna become like, right, cuz that was the thing, we wanna have some towns that we don't wanna become like and some that we do.
Are we at the point now, we, do we really need to do that still?
Well, that's what the one through five ranking will be, basically, I'll take the numbers, I'll take the numbers from each one of these. And I'll put it all in order, so the ones that, this isn't gonna be one through five, do you feel they have a lot of alt arts and cultures, do you wanna be like their arts and culture?
Right.
Because otherwise, it would be Fitchburg would win on things like business opportunities, it'd be a five, but if you don't want that many businesses in Hubbardson, you might give yourself a one. You don't wanna be like Fitchburg's business opportunities.
These original lists, I'm looking at Brimfield, Deerfield, Dunstable, I don't know them.
Right.
And I tried, I tried to look it up a little bit, but I didn't get much information.
I think you're, you can put, um, we're gonna allow an N A, you know, I don't know.
Okay.
And just leave a blank if you don't know the town, right.
That's kinda what I do with my list too, so.
I think that this list is good and then maybe add some of the, a couple more.
What would you like to see back on there? Ashburnham and anybody.
I think you said the the Brookfields, right?
I like Ashburnham.
Yep, oh yeah, Ashburnham is definitely one that should be on there, yeah.
Does anybody wanna keep Brimfield, Deerfield or Dunstable? Does anybody wanna keep Brimfield, Deerfield or Dunstable?
I'm not familiar enough with them to, to comment.
I don't know Great Barrington.
I don't know that either.
Yeah.
I don't know Lee or Lennox.
Nope.
I know North Brookfield, I liked, um.
Okay.
Um, Paxton's already on it, Peter Sam is, is there, Phillipsen is Princeton is there.
Yep.
Rutland Sterling is there, Templeton, I like West Brookfield.
Yep, Templeton, yep. Okay.
That's the only other one I would like to see on there.
West Brookfield, North Brookfield and West Brookfield?
So they're typically North and West Brookfield.
Two different towns.
One starts with an A and the other starts with a W.
You're right, the question is, is are they very different?
You can, again.
Actually, they're not.
They are different, yeah.
So my question would be, is this sufficient by having one of those two towns?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember which one has the nice, has the beautiful.
The huge common is West Brookfield, and North Brookfield is quite small.
It's, uh, keep West Brookfield. Right.
So the population's about twice, I think, in West Brookfield over.
They're both really nice communities.
Because.
And one of them, I don't know, I used to, you know, Paxton's closer. You can put, this is not supposed to take forever, if you don't know the town, you don't have to go out and spend half a day investigating it, you don't have to look it up.
I don't know.
I just, I went online, I went online.
Just put, you know, leave it blank.
Right, and that's what I'll do, because I don't.
Okay.
There'll be some, I don't know.
So, so this is, you're rating these towns on these categories, and then you're gonna rate our town, which is in the middle of the pack here, on where we stand, one through five on these.
Okay. Is that our homework again?
And then one being, uh, so your, your idea here is, is, is it to create some mathematical model of this here?
So then we would have an idea if we wanted to cut it, uh, do we wanna do the top five and submit those to the select board?
Would you like? Correct. So my question is, is do you wanna have the one or the five representing the one that most, is the most attractive?
I was thinking that one would be the least attractive, five would be the most attractive.
Thank you.
And each box goes a one through five, yes.
Yes, it would be like Athol, it's like, oh, this is the most attractive, what I would consider the most attractive for this attribute.
Right.
So you're gonna give us a little key at the bottom?
I will.
Alright, Christine is good at this stuff, so let's let her.
Okay, go ahead.
And we're ranking it how we want it to be for Hubbardston, so not that Fitchburg has great businesses, but that we don't want Hubbardston to be like Fitchburg businesses. So we would might rank Fitchburg for businesses as a one, because we don't wanna ever have that many businesses here, type of.
Yes, you can say most attractive, meaning it's, you know.
Right, so we're not saying Fitchburg has great businesses, we're saying we don't want our businesses to be like Fitchburg businesses, which we don't want.
So, so really, they're not as attract, that's not attractive.
Or we do, or we don't.
Or we do, correct, that's right, exactly, but that's what the one to five means, not how well they're doing, how much we wanna be like them.
Or we do, or you don't, exactly, so that's why it's attractive and least attractive, yes. Yes, exactly.
Right. Okay. So we go.
Does everybody sort of get that?
Yep.
Yes.
It's like, how much, and this is remembered, it's not businesses, it's business opportunity.
Correct.
Right.
If you wanted to get started here, and you know, how much business opportunity?
Correct.
Right, alright. I don't know how it'll work, but it's gotta be quantifiable in some way.
Right.
So this was my thinking, alright.
Alright, alright, sounds good.
Alright, let's go back to our agenda and, yeah, cause I wanna wrap up pretty quick. I want to, next is matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair, I just wanna make a quick announcement. Um, because this happened after the package went out, and that is, there's a, I went and met, oh, you wanna pass this out? Oh my gosh, it's getting late, okay. This is the two minute version, guys. Pass me down, okay, one group.
Just pass it on, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Gives me something to do.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, this, you've kinda seen this before, but, so, but it didn't, then we skipped it and I don't wanna lose track of it, because I'm kinda looking for some direction from you guys.
I get to stand up, so maybe.
So here's a story with this, as you may remember, this was from the, the, uh, housing production, all the land owned.
Yeah.
And this was my, like, looking through it, and this is maybe not completely right, but I really spent a lot of time at it. Um, and Christine is taking a look at it too, and this came up with the buildable lots in town that would meet the two hundred feet frontage, the two hour mi- the two acre minimum, um, are, are these, and these are, some of these are really, it boils down to the Ragged Hill Road lots.
That's what it looks like, yeah.
Because the bottom three yellow ones are old gravel pits with a lot of, um, you know, a lot of groundwork that would be, need to be done, right? But these, these parcels in the middle on Ragged Hill Road, um, the top one is, is kind of a five acre lot that's divided by a road. It's a little short of frontage, a little short of area, so it probably would require a, if we were to use it for affordable housing, a special permit, which we might or might not be able to get. But this group in the middle, the band of the four, are completely two hundred feet frontage and two hundred, uh, two acres.
Two over two acres.
Yep.
And they have been owned by the town since nineteen sixty-eight, where they were deeded to the town.
I believe that was where they wanted to put the cell phone tower.
I don't know, but it's about, I would like, so my goal was to talk to, I talked to, uh,
Yeah, that's where it was.
Um, Ryan about, can you not, can you, can we have these evaluated by Habitat for Humanity as to whether they truly are buildable houses? And if they are, would we be willing, would you be willing to let us again go talk to the CPA, let us hold a, you know, try to get it, try to get something nailed down, so the town.
I would love to see something more forward with that.
Yeah, so the town could maybe vote on it at town meeting.
Right.
So what we're dealing with is, we're not the only people, the town wants to sell some of this land to make money. So we got into this argument about, you know, yeah, you can sell it and you get fifty, fifty thousand maybe a lot, and you could buy a piece of equipment, but you know, sell them to, if you let Habitat build on them, you're probably gonna get three new kids in the school and a, we went round and round, and, um.
And you get the taxes.
And the taxes, yeah, but if you sell them to a developer, you get the two hundred thousand upfront, plus you get a taxes, cause he'll put up a five hundred thousand dollar house, right?
Right.
So I mean, you can go round and round about these arguments.
Right.
But basically, everybody knows, we don't have any for, affordable housing except the senior housing.
And if we don't do something soon to show, show we're working on it, somebody could come in here and build a whole complex.
Right, that's true.
And we have no say in that.
But it's also just kinda like the right, this is a state mandate, all towns are supposed to have a certain amount of affordable housing, so.
And this, and this at least shows that we are moving towards it.
Right, so, but, maybe saying set aside the four lots is too ambitious, maybe it should be, look, give us a chance, let, you know, set aside two, two lots. See if we can get two houses up and see where it goes. He also said to me, in answer to Bill's question, that there are, he, they acknowledge that there's these vacant rundown houses. And, but the town doesn't own them, that's why I said, why you build them, we don't own them, you know, right?
And they don't wanna go on.
But he said there, if, they could, um, they really need to have the tax liens foreclosed on them, which is a procedure, and then they might become available, so they're not,
Right.
you know, they're out there as a possibility in the future. But anyway, the short and long of it is, he said, come to the November fourth, select board meeting. And make your pitch to save a couple of these and to have them evaluated for affordable housing.
I think that's a great idea.
I think it's awesome. I make a motion that we do that.
Okay, that's what I want.
Yes.
But we send, and anybody can come with me, if you want. Um, do you wanna do that? You want me to do that?
I think that is a.
Okay, alright, a second and a, and a vote then?
Let's, let's kick, start this here, yeah.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay, done, so that's that item.
And let's not forget that the, um.
Come, if you can, to that meeting.
November fourth.
We're first on the mi- agenda, yeah, go, sorry, that's a while.
No, no, let's, let's not forget what Bill, uh, mentioned, uh, Bill Murray mentioned the other day about the Worcester County DA office.
Yes.
Because I think that is, that is a very, very interesting component into this here, because I know that for a town like Hubbardston, it is a costly process to go through the foreclosure
Right, right.
uh, issue, you know, the, the process, I should say, uh, versus if you have now, uh, the power of the district attorney of the, of, of Worcester County behind you, I think there's a, there's something to be said about utilizing that.
We should look at that, although what he said is we, some of these.
I'm not saying that we need to start off with that, I think this is, this is an easier start, it puts, 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 puts this in forward motion.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I think the other component is a very important one that we ought to also consider.
Yes, I do like that as well.
Well, we, we're supposed to, we're down thirty-six, or something like that, thirty something.
Thirty-six.
Ha- affordable housing units that we do not have, these could be done also as single family or duplexes, but the duplexes take fifty feet more frontage.
Yes.
Right. Oh, really?
So it's kind of a catch twenty-two, unless you could get the, a special permit.
Unless you combine, or you combine two of these.
Yeah, I combined two of them, but then, you know, you've got this eight hundred feet, how do you split it, right?
No, that's two hundred, plus two hundred, you get the four hundred, you can have one duplex and you can have another duplex.
Right, yeah, 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 you could.
You see, you still get four, you still get four?
So we could get. Right.
You get it out of duplexes with long, larger properties.
Right, so that's a good argument for arguing for two of the lots too. It's, I'd like to argue for the four, I just think.
It might be overly ambitious.
Yeah, I think that, that I'm not gonna get a, you know.
Yeah, if you can get them to give you one or two, and then sell one or two.
But he has a good point, if you do, but if you can be, with an extra fifty feet, you can build duplex, so we'd be able to get four housing units instead of two housing units, if they give me two lots.
There you go.
Think about this here, you basic, what you basi- you basic.
Three, three lots, no.
They have to give you three lots, to give you two, two.
Three lots.
You basically have a thousand, you have a thousand feet of frontage here. You add them all up together, you got exactly a thousand feet. That gives you four lots of two hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Oh, so the two fifty covers you. Two fifty.
Well, once they get two hundred feet of frontage.
So it means that you need to just work around, you need to, you need, you need to work with this two hundred and ninety-one.
Well, you, she said you need two fifty for the business.
Work.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah.
And.
So the, oh, that's right, the one is the two ninety-one.
You see where I'm going with this here?
So I need to take that lot, we need to, I didn't see the difference.
No, what I'm saying is, is that as, as a planning board, we need to maybe look at these four lots, and how do you reshuffle?
Yeah.
And I don't know if we can or cannot, but if we can maybe re- re-divi- re-divide them, because they are raw land, right?
Yeah.
You have a thousand square feet of frontage.
Yeah.
And not square feet, it's a so- thousand linear feet of frontage.
Frontage, right.
And what you do is, is you take that thousand feet combined, and now you re-divide this here, so each one of them have two hundred and fifty.
I believe legally you can do that if you own a.
Yeah.
Okay, now you have a thousand feet, you can put four pro- four pieces of property to work with duplexes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. Right.
Right, right. Alright, I got. Point taken. I'll try to see what I can do on the fourth, and please come and support me if you can get away. They said they put us early on the agenda, so you don't have, wouldn't have to.
Are we gonna go over any of these other issues?
The other issue of.
We do have.
Will, Williams, okay, now I'm gonna go to, turn this over to Christina for a minute.
Oh, boys.
Okay, uh, I can try and get through these as quickly as possible. The one forty-seven Williamsville Road report, uh, is just, um, Bill Murray, uh, going out and checking out one forty-seven Williamsville Road.
Yeah.
On Friday.
Um, with the erosion controls, he also went last Friday to make sure with the nor'easter that was coming in, that the erosion controls were in place. If you wanna read this report, it is here in the, um, packet, uh, he goes into, uh, what's required. Um, so that's all I have on that. The next is, uh, gravel pits. Uh, I think you'll note, um, this handout here. After extensive research, I now have addresses, names of all parcels, uh, previously associated with all gravel pits in town.
Oh, wow.
Um, however, I would like to, that, that letter that we all voted on, um, has not been sent out, because some of the names on here, I am not positive they were gravel pits. And I would like permission just to amend the draft to say may have been, um, because obviously we have, um, some of these, like, one belonging to Mr. Mark Dime, Demic. Um, I'm not positive it was used as a gravel pit, but aerial photography done by Axis GIS indicates that it may have been. So I just wanted, before we, you know, send something out and somebody comes in here storming, goes, mine was never a gravel pit, you know, we don't wanna get, except when it is.
Right, right.
So I wanted permission to change the, um, the wording of the draft, and we had a vote on that, so I was just wondering if I could get that.
Can you read a sentence that you changed?
I don't have it, I was just gonna change one word from was gravel pit to may have been.
I make a motion that we.
Oh, may have been, okay, oh, yeah, okay.
I make a motion that we change the draft letter to say may have instead of was.
I'll second that.
Yeah, that's all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
You had to put a note on Cateysto's that we're aware of their situation.
I'm sorry?
With the Cateysto.
I did, I, they are on the agenda, it says, uh, I did send them an email.
No, I mean on this, for this letter.
I mean, they came in last time.
They, they don't need to.
They don't need to, don't send the le- them a letter.
Yeah.
No, of course not, no, I wouldn't put, I wouldn't put, uh, them on the list, because they're currently in the process for a nomination.
Okay, alright. Right, 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 okay.
Um, and I do know that they came in last, uh, they were given an email recently, letting them know that they will be on the agenda until their matter is closed. However, if there's no progress, they won't, there won't be anything done.
Right, they don't have to be here.
They don't have to come in.
Okay, but next thing, you notice on this list, the town of Hubbardston.
Mm-hmm.
Lots of little gravel pits scattered around. Um.
Yeah, it's all that.
That's because some of them used to belong to other people that foreclosed, so, um, there are several of those that weren't originally belonging to the town, but now are now the property of the town.
Are some of those the ones that we saw earlier in the list that we were reviewing with the acreage lots?
Yes, the, any, that, that list from before actually includes all town lots, not, and that means all town pits.
Yeah, there's some of them up here.
No, I understand that, but it includes some of these here, obviously, that are in here.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
So, sort of a segue into that, is the next thing in your package is just a note from me. I was invited on September eleventh to go tour the gravel pits. This gravel pit owned by the town, one of the big ones. Um, so we went to one of the pitches on Pitcherville Road, it's owned by the town, lot fifty-seven as shown here. And I went with Ryan, Ryan went out there because he's trying to, he's trying to help us figure out, well, the town figure out what to do with the town gravel pits that have been abandoned. So he had this guy, John Furman, uh who's an engineer with the director and director of land use development for a large engineering consulting firm in Springfield. And that works with state, federal, and local governments on this kind of issue, and he has a lot of gravel pit experience. So we went out and we walked it and this also about's a very large pit owned by the Marinellis.
Yeah, they all come together up there.
Yeah, they all blend together, and there is a solar field at the end of it, which had not been restored before the solar panels went up. And there, I gotta tell you, there is not, it's, it's like a desert.
It's a mess.
Nothing will grow, it's just stripped, it's just. But Mister Furman was.
You're talking, you're, I'm sorry.
Our pit and their pits, it's, it's nothing, it's barren.
The Marinellis.
It's, it's, they just stripped all the gravel and left it this huge.
And left it, and where they did put up the um the solar fields, they did not do this kind of thing with Cattisto, they just put it on the sand.
Right.
So I mean, I guess it's low maintenance, you don't mow anything, but it's, and what I did hear from him is, you cannot, if you were to try to let this go back to forest, it would take, you know. Decades and decades, and he said the only way to restore the forest would be to actually dig the holes, plant the trees like a nur- you know, nursery and and redo it.
Or do it, how about do what Cattisto's did with the.
Well, he said, he actually was not fond of that solution, he said, you can do it and you will get grass and you will never get anything but grass. For a long, long time, couple shrub trees, it's this.
Which is suitable for a solar field.
It would be better, I mean, if the land's gonna sit there under the solar panels twenty, forty years, maybe you go through that many seasons, you might get, you know, half inch of topsoil, but it's. You look at the amount of decimation that gravel pits do, and I think there is a lot to be said for an overlay district.
Oh yeah.
For solar panels rather than taking more forest and more, so I really wanna think about that.
You mean, maybe leaning towards putting more solar panels out there?
Yeah, and letting the town get involved in it, you know, you can.
I think that's a great idea, and more importantly though is, is that if we're looking at a place like Pitcherville Road, we may have to talk and work with the utility company here. Reason being is, is that one of the objections that I've heard in the past is that um the capacity of the, the takeaway capacity of the wattage that comes out of there. Is not necessarily uh suitable for the infrastructure that exists.
It's, it's too much power to take out.
Right. Right, right.
However, again, it 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 can, it can be remediated.
Eventually, it's gonna be there, the capacity in the lines to take on.
No, no, it it would have to be built, it would have to be.
Electric company would have to come in and spend a lot of money to upgrade it, and they also have to upgrade the substation where that power goes. So this is just the wires that go to the solar field, if it comes over here to the substation in South Gardner or Pittsburgh or Westminster, they have to upgrade that too.
Well, there's, there's a lot of work, but I'm thinking that we have, while, while we're at capacity right now.
Right.
Is it ti- is it time to plan?
Yes.
And what do you wanna do?
Oh yes.
So actually this, identifying the old gravel pits, whether they're owned by us, the town, or other people. Might be kind of a blueprint we could use for that solar, there's more things you gotta consider, the proximity and a lot, a lot of those.
Right, right.
However, however, the component of, let's not, let's, let's not destroy, but rather reuse what we have.
Right.
In a manner that is suitable for that type of development, I think is a excellent idea, one that I would like to.
Well, a lot of people have said, make a industrial park, but I don't see that's ever gonna happen here.
Yeah. The, the.
I think solar fields would be better when we get more money coming out.
Well, here, the upshot of this was, that um, and I have, I should have followed up with Ryan on this again. The guy said, I can, he, he suggested, it do- it is close to, it has good um access to sixty-eight. Because that is the back door kinda to this field. And um, wh- which might make it good for a, a, an office, a industrial park of some sort, he said mostly what people are looking for on our distribution facilities.
Like at the Amazon distribution facilities for warehouses where you can drop and pick.
Right. Right, so you'd have to, and I said, well.
The only issue though concerning is, is that those are areas that are highly residential, right now.
A lot, a lot of truck, they, they had a lot of problems with the big day because they hauled all the gravel out of there, and a lot of people were very upset about all the trucks and.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and the distribution center by definition is trucks you're distributing, right, but it's low water use, it's low, so we talked, he talked about that, he talked about.
Exactly.
Maybe you could do a, a denser housing development and put in a package plant of some sort and then. Uh, so, but the upshot was, he was going to, um, they were gonna do. A study of several scenario, different scenarios of what could be done with this land.
Good.
Uh, for the select board, for the town, and get back to us.
Nice. Awesome.
But meanwhile, we discovered there's a lot of, a lot more gravel pits that weren't on there, that that was only one of many.
Right.
So we're trying to get a handle on the problem, but I wanted to tell you I'd gone out there and my impression from doing that, 'cause I was looking at affordable housing, and I think.
Well, thank you.
There's so much land restoration you'd have to do, I mean, habitat, say.
Yeah, they, they wouldn't want that place.
No. Okay, I'm back to Christina, go ahead.
Are we gonna try and zip through these?
Yes, very quick.
Yes.
Okay, special permits outstanding, um, so with regards to the extension that was granted to Burn Shirt Road, you'll remember that we, we, it was about to expire. And we gave them another year. Um, it made me wonder, um, what other special permits we have out there, uh with regards to monitoring them or might need to be expired, but also the ones we've already granted. Like, for instance, all of our solar fields, we have, yes, we granted them, but they're supposed to be under permit conditions for the next twenty years, so these are all things that we need to monitor.
Okay.
That would take some money to have someone like Bill Murray to go out and make sure they're adhering to the dis- you know. He said already that two forty-two and two th- I'm sorry, two thirty-two and two forty, uh Gardner Road, those solar fields, were not completely in compliance before the planning board. Sort of took them off their agenda, so these are things that the planning board needs to be aware of, we have an entire drawer full of special permits, that's just the tip of the iceberg.
Oh wow. Okay.
I was looking at, because these are the ones I can look into without spending extra money with Mister Bill Murray, things like our kennels. Do we happen to know that these kennels are operating within the decision permits of not having more than six dogs? Of not um doing things like, um, all of them are spayed and neutered, uh I know they're being um, every year they're being licensed by the town. However, I went to look into that licensing and because of the um breaks with regards to pricing, some of them are put in there as ten dogs or less, but the planning board only authorized them for six dogs. So, I mean, these are the small potatoes of all of these special permits we have out there, the big ones being the solar pits.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this being the other ones, but um, we are the uh pit permit granting authority and it is our job to work with someone like the zoning enforcement officer to make sure these things are actually getting done. In the way that we granted them, so.
So she's compiling the list.
I am trying to compile it from a large list.
Yeah, it's not, it's, it sounds to me that once that list is here, we have big homework to do.
Yep. Yes, and that's what I want to.
Yeah, a few weeks meeting or something.
That's what I, I wanted to bring up to the, the board is that these things, um, especially things like the solar fields, uh if we have not heard from them in years, we'd have no idea if they're actually maintaining their, their.
Well, there's, that's one piece, but I think what also needs to be uh explored here is, is uh how, how do we pay for this here?
No, that's another point.
And so if, if, if there is something in the contracts that have been signed with these uh facilities, that they are responsible for. The review and how that is going to be paid, we need to elicit that from the contract itself.
Right, and I've been talking to Bill Murray with regards to that, he said that most of them had a clause in there that basically said that at any point, the planning board can review them. And uh in that case, we would have to reach out to them and, and secure money in advance.
But the question is, is, my point though is, is a review, does that entail that, who's responsible for that?
Yes.
Are we responsible for the payment of that review, is the.
We'd have to look at each and every contract.
My point, exactly.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's that, I want to put it on everyone's agenda because it is something I'm working on, um as another large list for us to have to, I'm sorry for giving you more homework.
Yeah. Well, but we can chunk that up, it doesn't have to be done all at once.
Yes, exactly. Okay, um, as I said, I'm gonna go right through these quickly, training for planning board members, you'll notice attachment aid, I got in touch with the CPTC, CPTC, which is Citizen Planner Training Collaborative. And what they do is they offer training for planning board mem- municipal members or common, um, anyone who wants to, with regards to training for boards, A and Rs, special permits. Not only can you go to the, the annual convention, they can come here, so if all five of you wanted to take a class, I could get them to come here and offer that class to the board.
Oh, I do that.
Um, and not only that, it's four hundred dollars a class, and these are the classes, if you guys wanted to look at them, it's three pages of classes. But if we did wanted to have one here, I would put a notice out to the other surrounding communities and we could possibly defray that cost by splitting it with another town and saying. If you guys wanna send your planning board over too, we can all be here and have the same class, so if you wanted to look through this, again, this'll be on the agenda next month. And maybe say, we would like to train on these things, that way the board can become more knowledgeable on A and Rs and other things like that.
Did you send those email to us? I don't remember.
I can email them to you, but I did provide them in your packet.
They're in there.
Okay.
It's attachment number eight, and there's, there's a description of each one as well.
Oh, okay.
Several of them would be interesting, so look at them and next time let, let me know.
Would you email me that, it's a lot easier for me with the email, it really is.
Okay. Okay.
I think ties into your next discussion point.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
I think it's awesome.
Next thing, as this was in your packet, is just the sign off of the last two warrants, uh you guys didn't get to it last time. Um, in this, um, it's office supplies, the nameplates, uh which we ordered and was requested, and then two uh places associates. I did get the checks from the Cattisto, and both of those checks were sent out on the last two warrants, so if you guys wanted to sign those, that's what's on there.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, actually I went out of order, I'm sorry, the next thing was actually the Chromebooks.
That's all right, we'll, we can.
You guys can sign, uh Chromebooks, you guys notice that we do have huge packets of paper every single time. I did get a quote from our IT, it'd be approximately two hundred dollars uh a unit to get Chromebooks like this le- board of selectmen have. Um, and you guys would have those at every meeting, it'd be something you could bring in, I would put uh all of this on a Google Drive. And you would have, you could look it up on your computer as opposed to having it in front of you. Um, it's something I would need a vote on, um, but again, we do have about twelve thousand dollars in the planning board account and this would be an administrative cost.
Can I make a motion?
And I'd also, I'd need to know whether or not you'd wanna get one for the associate member or just for the core group.
I make a motion that we appropriate the cost of the Chromebooks for every member on the planning board.
Including the.
Associate.
I second.
Can I quickly ask a question as part of the discussion?
Yes.
What's the cost, and it's, I, because it's justification, obviously, cost has to be justified, what is the cost comparison for doing the printing, your time, and so forth?
Right.
Can you quantify that roughly so that we can get an, an understanding as to what the savings would be?
I don't have those numbers.
Okay.
I would have to, um, go.
How many reams of paper do you go through averagesly for a meeting?
One meeting though, um, each of your thing, this, only this time, um, was about twenty to four, uh thirty pages.
Yeah.
Per member, and I did print out enough for the entire board, myself and.
Sure.
Mister Jamalia.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sorry, Mister Dubois, I apologize, um, so you're looking at about half a ream of paper just for this meeting, and some of them have gone upwards of a hundred pages apiece.
Sure.
Um, so we are looking at just a ream of paper, not including the printing.
It's about ten dollars, a ream of paper, that's what I, that's what it staples roughly.
So yeah, ten dollars, exactly. And then sometimes I have to go through and staple them, which costs me about, usually it's anywhere from a half an hour to an hour of my time.
Yeah. Plus it's your time, that's why I'm trying to understand, and so I think the justification is well.
Oh, I do, I do.
I mean, it's, it's easy, it can be justified very easily.
Right. Right.
Quick, quick question, are you able to without, we don't need our people to set them up and get them going and train us or anything, you can do all that, they're very friendly.
I could, I could go through that with you very, very easily, it's a Chromebook, Chromebooks are, are very limited operating systems, it would not be something that would take a lot of time for me to explain to all of you. Um, we could do it before uh a meeting as, well, we can't do it before a meeting because I'd have to do it individually, otherwise we'd run the risk of quorum issues. Um, but I could run, and if either, any of you had a problem with, you could come to my office, we could go through it very quickly.
Okay, and it does not.
I work in IT, I'm good.
So you, you got Chromebooks down there, alright, what about, um, so, so would this be used for email as well?
You can, you can, you can check your email on it, because it's a Chromebook, you'll have access to your email.
I mean, aside from getting the board. Just the Hubbardston.
And there would be a uh Google Docs account that you would literally have all of these documents in, um.
You can take notes.
So they would be saved forever.
Yeah. Yes, it would, well, everything on your, right, that's a good point, if you got these, um, anything you did on them would be saved forever, because it would filter through IT and IT never deletes anything that goes through a town account, and it would be public record.
What's the planning board's? Right.
Okay, I just wanna get the lay of the land.
Okay.
Are you, wanna take a vote on this, other question?
Well, we have a motion on the board.
You made the motion and I seconded it.
Yeah, so we need a vote.
Should we do it, guys?
Oh, we need a vote.
Yeah.
We need a, we have to vote.
Alright, all in favor of Chromebooks?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Unanimous, thank you very much.
I will move ahead on getting this going, okay, that was worn on, um, okay, so planning board operational procedures, I now have a ten-page draft document that I've, um.
Oh wow.
Uh, very, very loose, I've sent off to Alice in case I've missed anything, I also sent it to the TA because it's also how I spend my time, and he's tech, he's my supervisor. So they're looking at the overview draft at the moment before I start filling it in, once there's a more comprehensive document, I will circulate it to the entire board, um, for uh input.
Can I have a question for you?
Yes.
With that, um, you did a beautiful layout of procedure for uh scenic road steps and stuff, will that be part of that, will that be incorporated in it?
Yes. That would be a separate reference document, and I will be sending that to the board as well, I actually used it for this scenic road, um.
Yeah.
Application.
I think it should, could be an appendix to our procedures.
So.
Well, it's not just an appendix, I'd rather have it as a separate document so it doesn't have to be voted on, this is what it looks like, and it has a check off and tells you the date it was done. The reason I did not circulate this to the board before I did it, is 'cause I found there were certain things missing, so I'm going through going, oh, we need to have something that puts that in there. So, once I had test driven this, I was going to circulate it for um board review, uh but in the meantime, it's being, it was used for this one so that I could make sure I checked off everything. And then it would be something that the, the town folk could see as well, so they could step by step with us through it, every step of the way and know where we were and how long we had to do every step of the document.
Oh, good. So this will be part of the website?
This would be on the website as a checklist, so that they have it right next to the application.
I think that's wonderful.
There you go.
For more information about that.
Yes, a little bit more transparency, um, capital expenses discussion, um, that is, in your packet is attachment number ten. Um, I know it was due ta- two days ago, I did get special dispensation from the TA, if we wanted to put any uh capital expensive forward, the only one that I had anywhere on my radar with regards to the planning board. Was something that was originally initiated by Mister Robinson with regards to scanning the um files for the scenic road. A uh quote was put out for the entire town to do it, uh they went to the CPA for funding and were turned down. So the question being, um, whether or not the planning board as an entity wanted to try and move forward with a small scale project, um, to do that.
Do know that the capital budget that we're looking at here, because I'm part of the uh CIPC, uh it's, I think we're looking at anything that is ten thousand dollars or more.
Yes. I know, and I don't think that, that anything like that actually applies to the planning board unless you want to look at capital equipment, which would be something like a scanner. I did get um a scanner for a large scale.
And even a scanner is probably not that.
No, it's only five thousand.
Okay.
So I didn't know if the, the planning board wanted to even put forward something like that, it would be about, um, well, according to IT, it would be about five and a half thousand, but I'm still having them outsource.
But that's just a scanner, right, because it still would have.
It would be a printer, actually, that's why I'm having them re-quote it, because they gave me printer prices and that's five thousand, it might be much less than that.
Okay, but a scanner is one, one element of this, you're scanning it and then uh having it available either on a server that can be retracted, can, uh not retracted, can be re- re- uh. Can be taken out, can be reviewed, can be uh delivered or worked on, that's a, that's a separate beast altogether.
Well, we're trying to scan all the files.
Are we looking at? Yeah, but w- w- once it's scanned, what do we do with that, is my question, so I think.
Well, the town could use it.
No, no, the, the point I'm trying to make here is, is that scanning it and having it electronic form is absolutely important, but then, how do you access that? And how do you retrieve it? How do you then work with it, how do you make it available, how do you, uh, you know, if the building inspector needs to get that information, how do you make sure that you can get to it?
Right.
And then get it out?
Right.
At least now you know it's a piece of paper, it's maybe it's difficult to get to, but you will get to it.
Right. If we have to, because at the moment, we were denied CP funds and we don't have any um funds for the town, uh we were looking at a small scale, um, I, I have an extra hour during the week. I have fifteen hours at the planning board and, and technically that extra sixteenth hour, Ryan's having me look into personally managing a senior workoff force that will scan them for town access to the documents. We wouldn't have a, a server on the line, we wouldn't have a, anything too fancy, it would be a, um, we would get something like Adobe Pro, so it was, the documents would be searchable.
Yeah.
Um, which would be good because we obviously need that, but we wouldn't have any kind of database management, it would literally be a, a s- a subsection of the current server that would be accessible by town.
Uh, people.
Town people, but that would be great because everything would be in PDF, if you needed to see something, at least they could call it up and we wouldn't have to go to a file drawer. This is what we're working with now because we have no other funding or options.
May I ask, uh, maybe you know, or, or not, but do you know what the amount was that was requested from CPA?
I do not, I could look that up for you though and get that information for you.
All right.
I do know that they determined that it was not historical, um, that was a, a matter for debate, because all documents then passed into history, um.
Absolutely.
But he, they believed it was not a historical use for the in, for the money and they, that's why the application was denied.
Okay, but it will be interesting to know, how, how much are we talking about?
Okay.
Because th- there, I think we can potentially figure out.
Yeah.
What the allocation potentially could be from a planning board perspective, right?
Right. Right, and I don't know that we could get it, even get it on this capital budget, um, I was just um making, it, letting you know that was the only thing that I had on my purview that could even be possibly deemed capital.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you for doing that, 'cause I know that there's a, there's a need to get that out.
Okay.
Right.
And then the last app, salute last item, I apologize, I know it's nine, is new invoicing procedure, you'll see on here, it's a really, um. Sorry, here we go.